February fifteenth. Hi, guys. Welcome to the February fifteenth Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting. I'm calling the meeting order at six oh three. Okay. Lynn Kalani is gonna be late, but we've got five, so we're good. Okay. Due to an accident on one seventeen. So, any citizens' comments? And our student representative, Nick Malice, is at musical. There's a musical that he must be in, and he's at practice, so he won't be here. So, we're gonna jump right into new business. I think Anne Marie Stoika, the director of HR, is gonna share with us. I'm gonna, Brooke, I'm gonna let you tee that up.
Sure, thanks. And I'm suspecting that Dr. Bream is likely on his way too, because I think he wanted to be part of this.
So, that accident is right here in the center of town.
That's what they're just saying, yeah, so he may come in after. But let's get this started, anyway. So, Anne Marie Stoika was charged with pulling together the calendar group this year, and I'd like her to speak to its composition. There were quite a number of people involved. I think that they tried very hard to look at a number of different things from last year to this year to try to make the calendar a bit better. And I'll have her speak to that as well. So, Anne Marie, if you wanna kinda start, let's just talk about the composition of your group and how often you met.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for being able to turn to be here to present the calendar to you. The calendar is the work of our calendar committee. I would love to recognize some of their hard work. They were wonderful to work with. We had three parents. We had Stacy Kramer from Lancaster, Nicole Thomas from Bolton, and Sherri Katoski from Stowe. Then we had five teachers, Michelle Kelly, Kayla Hurley, Kim Bolis, Barbara Alberts Pirani, and Hannah Kaplan. And then my colleagues from Teaching and Learning, Cindy Larson, Martina Kenyon, Patty O'Connor, and Maran Dwyer were on the committee. And also, high school principal, Carrie Graham. We had some input various times from MRA principal Sean O'Shea, and also from the Florence Sawyer Assistant Principal Caitlin Herthold. And Alita has always been very generous with her computer skills. We got to that point. We met three times after school for an hour, an hour and a half each time, and we came up with a calendar that we've now presented to Superintendent Clenchin that you have in your packet. The calendar, as we've presented it to you, meets all the Commonwealth's regulations as far as requirements for the number of school days and for the time on learning. It's got the Massachusetts holidays in there, and it complies with our obligations with the NRA, with Unit A. Also, we made a special effort, and everyone was very good in their input, to try to preserve to the extent possible chunks of time, you know, so that we try not to break up the time too much. Of course, you know, there are holidays when they are when they are, and half-days and things. So, but that was a specific goal that we had. In a nutshell, the calendar you have there starts the week before Labor Day. It gives us one hundred eighty days for the students, one hundred eighty-four for the staff and teachers. It honors the usual holidays and vacation periods in February and April. Has apparently as the custom six early release days for professional development for the teachers. And twelve, the high school has got twelve late start days. We had, I understand, this year and last year. Dr. Graham, I think, will be answering any questions down about that. And then in the fall and in the spring, in November and in March, it's gonna be early release and a full day, a full non-student day for parent-teacher conferences, although the high school doesn't have those conferences in March. And then the culmination, of course, of the calendar will be the graduation for the class of 2018 on June tenth. And the last day on the calendar for school, depending on how the snow lies, will be between June fourteenth, if there's no snow, and June twenty-first, if we have five snow days. So, that's the calendar in a nutshell, and I would welcome your questions.
Woo, that was good.
Keep any reading on time.
So, does anybody have questions? I have a quick couple of things. Thank you for a couple of things. So, last year, the calendar committee, it was a tough discussion. And a couple of things that I noticed this year that you took into consideration, so I'm assuming that the folks on the calendar committee shared it with you since you were new. One is the day before Thanksgiving. That was a big outcry to have that day off instead of having it be a half-day. So, thank you for that. And the other thing is, I think it was March of this year. It was particularly broken up without full weeks of teaching. And we heard from the staff, too, that that's really not a good thing. So, you've been able to preserve a lot of that. And this looks so much better than what we've seen. So, thank you. I appreciate all your work. Anybody have any questions?
Did you have discussions?
I guess he's got a question.
Perhaps, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
In his chair. Did you have discussions of any nature in relation to the two spring-winter vacations? And what were the nature of them, if you had any?
The February and April vacations?
Yes.
You know, I think one of my reasons, casually in passing, we mentioned, you know, some districts have a March vacation and not the February and April, but it wasn't anything that we seriously considered doing. Because February and April both start with a holiday. So, it kinda works out, whereas in March, we wouldn't have a holiday to attach to. I mean, you still have eight days, but, yeah, no substantive discussions to make a huge change like that. Thank you for that question.
Any other questions, folks? And Dr. Graham is here, and I think you are here.
Yeah, and we wanted to talk just really briefly about delayed starts, because I just made the assumption that that might be a topic that might wanna be visited tonight. So, I had spoken with Dr. Graham earlier and suggested that maybe he maybe just come and offer your perspective right now. I know that your folks have done a fair amount of surveying of staff and that kind of thing. So, maybe if you could lay some of that out, because right now, those delayed starts are on this calendar. So, maybe if you could speak to us about it, I would, you know, I would appreciate it. And then if any school committee members have any questions, I can ask them.
Great. I don't know if you received, I had a packet of information that I put together for you about the late starts. I don't know if you got that already.
When did that go in the packet? Because I didn't see it till late this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
I have extra copies if people need.
Why don't you just review those, yeah.
So, can we just going forward, can we make sure that all documents and meetings are in forty-eight hours ahead, so we have a chance to review this?
That may have been my fault. I can't remember when I sent this over.
That's all right. That's okay.
So, I'd say blame me on that one.
I have one.
Well, she passes that out. So, this is the second year that we've had late starts at the high school. We had originally scheduled twelve late starts, but we backed that up to eleven because we had a conflict with MCAS dates. And in changing that conflict, it made more sense to go with eleven. The purpose of the late starts is to provide teachers with common collaborative time to work together. We use that for a variety of different purposes. In some cases, it's working on planning courses. In some cases, it's teachers coming together to teach the same course, talking about curriculum, talking about student progress, grading common assessments. We have a large group of teachers, this is the second year that we've done this, who are focusing on high school literacy, and that's across different content areas. This is the need for collaborative time. Well, this is something that's been a real focus of my professional work over the years, is the importance of collaborative time at any grade level. At high school, it's particularly challenging to build it into a master schedule. And it's something that has been noted throughout the research literature. It's important, but specific here to Neshoba. It's something that, from the time I got here, teachers were talking about. The NES report mentioned it multiple times. It's something that the high school would really benefit from. And so, last year was the first year that we were able to do the twelve late starts on late start days. Our normal start time is seven forty. So, on a late start day, students come two hours late. That's at nine forty. Staff still report to school by seven thirty at their normal time, and then they spend those first two hours working in different teams. I, last spring, there's a process and proposal template by which teachers propose how they'd like to use that time. Every teacher's required to be collaborating during that time. At the end of this packet, you'll see the template that we use. So, teachers fill that out in the spring, send those proposals in to me. I then either approve them or ask them to tweak them, and then put together kind of a master schedule for that. Then teachers work. They create work products, which might be common assessments, it might be curriculum. Those are typically also tied into their professional goals for the year. So, I've seen that be a tremendously successful thing. This year, even more so than last year. But I'm someone who always likes to understand feedback and how things are perceived by people other than just me. So, last year, I put out a survey to parents to get their feedback about how they saw late starts, if they saw that to be burdensome, particularly from a transportation standpoint. And then this December, during our faculty meeting, had a survey that I had all of the faculty fill out. On the second page of this, I just summarized the feedback. Just in a nutshell, when I surveyed parents last spring, they were very, felt very positively about it. Large majority of parents indicated that they did not find them to be burdensome and that they would be in favor of them continuing. When I surveyed the staff, the large majority of them were also in favor of continuing late starts. Twelve is the number that we had last year. Twelve is the number originally scheduled for this year. When I asked the faculty if twelve felt like the right number, too many, not enough, majority said that twelve seemed like the right number. Some people wanted more, but twelve seemed like the number that most people were in favor of. And so, as part of the calendar committee, I requested to put in twelve late starts again for next year, and those are represented in the calendar that comes to you.
Okay. Questions? Neil.
So, are you gonna re-survey in this upcoming March?
I'd be happy to. If you.
Well, just wondering, year over year, where we're.
I think that'd probably be a good idea. I thought about surveying mid-year, but that felt like a little bit too close. But I think surveying parents, again, I generally like to do some surveys of parents in the spring. So, I think surveying parents again is a great idea.
I know this is a hard one, too, but is there any way of measuring the effectiveness of what teachers are actually getting out of this? Other than just, you know, their responses?
I mean, yes, it's the products that come from it. So, things like, I'll give you just one kind of quick little example. In sophomore year, kids, most kids take biology as a science. And in the past, we've had the option of three different levels. College prep, accelerated, or advanced placement biology. Advanced placement biology is a double-period class, so kids committing to that are committing to two periods worth of work. And there was a lot of conversation around whether or not we should offer an honors biology that wouldn't be the two full periods, but would still give kids kind of an advanced opportunity. This year, for the first time, we're offering an honors biology class. It's been very positively received. That was partially the outcome of work that was done by teachers during late starts. Our chemistry teachers then started talking about during late starts this year, we wanna do something similar with chemistry, because junior year, most kids take chemistry and do the same thing, college prep, accelerated, and advanced placement. But there wasn't an honors-level chemistry option. So, the chemistry teachers have been meeting, and they said, we would like to do the same thing. So, next year, we're gonna offer an honors chemistry five-credit option as well. So, I think the, it's not an easy way. It's a kind of a complicated and cumbersome way. But the best way to measure it is what are the outcomes? New classes that have developed, new curriculum that's developed, new assessments that have developed, activities that are happening in classrooms, for example, Chromebooks. A bunch of our foreign language teachers are working about how they're integrating Chromebooks into their first-year language classes that have a lot of freshmen. So, I don't think there's like an easy metric. The biggest one is really looking at what are all the different things that are produced from it.
One last one, and it has to do with, you know, we've got twenty-three point one, somewhat important, fourteen point three minimally. When I look at that, roughly, we're looking at thirty-five percent or so, thirty-seven percent, forty percent are saying, eh, it's okay. It's the teacher feedback I'm looking at. So, I'm wondering if you've considered any alternatives, whether mixing some sort of PD activity or something like that into it that those people might perceive a better value out of with that time than the collaborative aspect?
So, we also have early releases, in which case teachers have opportunities to do some sort of choice professional development. My intent with this was really to have it be focused on teachers being able to create their own proposals around the way that they want to use their time. We have had some different, for example, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of an early release. It's possible to bring in some other people from the outside to have kind of more, canned isn't the right word, but structured, you know, kind of professional development. That's certainly something that we could look at. And I think that there's value in me, prior to the end of the year, getting some more specific feedback about, you know, if this wasn't something that you found to be as productive as you would like, what are the things that you want it to look like? So, yeah, I think there's certainly, there's certainly ways to continue to improve this. It's by no means perfect, but I would say overall, it's been very positive we received.
So, I'm gonna jump in real quick. First of all, congratulations on your new adventure.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, and you will be missed. I appreciate everything you've done for the district and the kids. So, now I'm gonna switch gears, because you know this is one of my favorite discussion points of the year.
Absolutely.
I have heard from so many parents. Now, one of the things that I really think we need to start to do is I see lots of, you know, positive on the staff, and it's positive about professional development. But what I'm not seeing is how this drives student achievement. So, if we're gonna make the commitment to really, and it's a financial commitment, too, right? It's a loss of hours in the classroom, which is some parents' concern. How do these late starts translate into, and I'm not asking you to give that to me now because that would be anecdotal, and I think we need something a little more concrete. But everything we do and every decision we make is supposed to be based on driving student achievement, or shoring up student achievement, or supporting student achievement. So, I would wanna know, how do these late starts drive student achievement? And I'm not sure that that's clear. And I really appreciate the way that you, I think you tweaked this survey from last year. Is it the same one?
The staff survey is different. The parent survey is the one from last year. But the staff survey, I did go in and make some changes to the staff survey.
It looks like it, so thank you for doing that. On the parent survey, though, I think next year, we should ask parents, if we're gonna go forward with this, if they see the value. Are they concerned about the loss of instructional time, rather than us hearing it anecdotally? Do parents have a concern about the loss of instructional time? And that may not be something everybody else wants to know, but because I've heard it several times, I think we need to understand.
I have only this to offer during our calendar committee discussions. I can remember, I can see her lips moving, Patty O'Connor telling us from Teaching and Learning that she's, in her studies, see, many studies that say that one of the greatest predictors of student achievement is teacher collaboration time. I just remember her saying that.
Yeah, but I wanna know what the measurement is and what the outcome is. So, I think so, too. Obviously, it isn't. I'm not suggesting we would take professional development time away, but this is a significant. And it's also during the school day, and we don't get the kids for that long. So, I would wanna know how this directly impacts student achievement. And then, did I read this wrong? On the, each late start means the loss of two hours of school and instructional time. To what extent is the loss of time for late starts a concern to you? That's the.
That's for staff.
Staff.
I asked staff that question.
So, that makes me nervous. I think, Neil, I hope I'm not reiterating what you just said, that there's concern. There's forty-six percent concern that it does, that they are concerned they're losing those two hours of time. So, I would wanna know, well, first of all, that's half, almost half the population of staff. So, that concerns me. And then on top of it, what is it about the loss of time? Is it, you know, are these specific leveled classrooms? I don't know what it is, but we need to be able to dig into that a little bit more. And again, I like the idea of it, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable without really understanding what we're trying, where we're trying to get to from a, an outcome, a measurement, and a student achievement. Kathy.
So, sort of related to what you're talking to, or talking to, talking about.
Talking.
I hear what you're saying. The things that were identified as the, on the first page, as things educators participated in. It sounds like that there are products associated with these.
Yes.
That would be helpful to, some of them, for example, creating measurement and intervention approaches for students with deficient algebra skills. That should represent some sort of a way to provide us with.
Data.
To see if this has indeed helped.
Yep.
And it might take, you know, anywhere from three to five years to see that it has made a difference, just because of the nature of doing that level of assessment and adjustment and et cetera. But I would wanna see some of these work products. And I think that that's evidence of what has been done. And then for teachers to speak to, how is improved instruction, and how do they know that? So, we can get a, I mean, not everything has to be a standardized test. It can be more of a qualitative measurement. But the stuff that is identified, sounds good, it would be good to see it. And I wonder how visible it is to the parents, how parents are aware of it. Because that might mitigate the concern about instruction, because a lot of the things they're doing are meant to improve student learning by improving curriculum and improving construction. So, I think, to your point, to work out some of these fine points, or to provide the data, or identify things that people can see and understand that show that this time that we're taking is making a difference. Look at this, and then look at the result.
And I think you're right, because I think if we had that data, then those parents who have concerns, including myself, would be able to see, this is what, this is what we expect the outcome to be. This is what's happened the year before, and then the year before. So that we would have some data on that. Again, I don't think that late starts are a bad thing, but we gotta tie it to achievement and driving things forward. But thank you for that, yeah. Any other, Neil, I mean, Mark, I'm sorry.
When we organized the calendar, we're trying to meet with a state law about number of hours of instruction, right?
Nine hundred and ninety instructional hours.
So, therefore, are you actually losing hours for these late starts? You're actually keeping track of them in terms of you're putting your calendar together, and it's not true that there are lost instructional hours? Is that a correct understanding?
So, there are, we have fewer instructional hours with twelve late starts than we would have without late starts. However, we still have more than nine hundred and ninety instructional hours. So, I have a spreadsheet that I do every year, and I calculate, here's how many instructional minutes there are in each different kind of a day, a late start day, an early release day, on a regular day. And then, depending upon the number of days we're talking about, multiply that and come up with a total number. So, we exceed the nine hundred and ninety instructional hours required by the state. But if you get rid of late starts, then that's, you know, twenty-four instructional hours that you would add on top of what we already have.
So, some instructional hours actually have been cannibalized for the purpose of collaborative development.
Yes, because, yeah, students are coming two hours late, twelve times over the course of the year.
And the restrictions have been the number of days in the contract with our teachers. Is that part, one of the limiting factors for structuring the calendar, as well as the late starts and the hours?
Well, yeah, we have one hundred and eighty calendar days, so we can't construct beyond one hundred and eighty calendar days.
So, the.
Before you go, before you go, anybody else?
No, no, no.
Okay, go ahead, Neil.
So, I, you know, it's this wormhole thinking, too. So, maybe, possibly, you have people that collaborate for, you know, two or three of these, because that's really all they need. And then, they've got extra time that, you know, this comes up, and well, we've really collaborated, and what we need to collaborate, we're all set. And so, I think not only evaluating, I think it's almost two different things, looking at the measurement, but then the effectiveness of the time that we're using. And that's why I brought up like the PD alternative, because if you've got teachers that are saying, we'd love more PD time, if there's like self-directed, or, and I'm not telling you what to do, but, I mean, you know, but if they have that ability, we might be killing two birds with one stone, where that collaborative thing, once that is fulfilled in their mind, we still have that time to get the PD in there and maximize the value of that. I'm just throwing that out.
The other, to your point, is the idea of curriculum development. I don't think that a lot of money is budgeted for summer work for the purpose of curriculum development. I know there are academies and workshops and whatnot. But if there's curriculum, and, you know, you can be inclusive of everybody's collaboration because it's part of their contractual time. In the summertime, if you develop a curriculum, you have to pay them, and you might not have everybody involved. So, for that purpose, this is good. I mean, there are a lot of, this isn't, you know, there are a variety of things to do with the time. And I think that it has been a very creative way to find the time, because it is a challenge to find the time in high schools. Some of them are just at nine ninety. And so, this hasn't, did we have to pay the teachers anymore? Do we have to increase? So, this has all been done within the budget, within the budgeted salary for them. So, on paper, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, I think. But I'd just like to see more detail about this.
Well, exactly. I think we, so, when does, when do you need an answer from us on the calendar?
Well, I think that the phone calls will start to come from people who are looking to make vacation plans, you know.
Well, besides that.
The policy, I think, just says that the superintendent needs to bring it to you in March. I don't think it's, I don't think the school, but it's policy says when you need to vote on it.
Okay, so, we have some time. So, I think, to Kathy's point, I, you know, this is the second year, and thank you. And I really appreciate it. But, you know, I have a question, too, along the lines of what Kathy said. Is every teacher using this? Does every teacher have a plan?
Yes.
Okay. We can talk offline about something. But, so, if every teacher has a plan, then the departments know what their gold outcomes are gonna be and how they're using that time.
It's not necessarily by department, so you have some cross-departmental stuff, too. So, there are specific products that are laid out in the proposal that each teacher puts in, when they put in their plan. So, the plans that they, it's not an individual teacher putting in a plan. It's three chemistry teachers saying, this is what we wanna do, or ten teachers from different departments saying, here's the literacy thing that we wanna focus on. So, they lay out the products in their plans, and then in most cases, those products are also tied into the way they're evaluated at the end of the year or two-year cycle. As a professional practice goal.
So, I think what I, what I think, some of what I'm hearing is, if we could have a, some documentation that illustrates to us, this is what they're working on in these late starts. Because this is great, and the survey results are great, but doesn't tell us what they're working on. And also, now you have two years of data, right? And that doesn't make a trend, but at least we will be able to understand. If you could come back and tell us, how is this impacting student achievement? I think we need to know that. Kathy, you have one more?
Yes. Related to teacher-submitted proposals. Do they have a guidelines for submitting the proposal? Or do they just submit something, or you have it locked out?
So, the, the last page is a template, so they have to then fill in this template that I gave them.
Describe activities. Do they have in that? And I just, I looked at the stuff, so I'm.
Yeah.
Anyway, in their proposal, is there something that says, something to the effect that this project will improve student learning by, as measured by level?
To a certain extent. So, it asks about data evidence that points to this is an important endeavor. Talks about what you accomplish, and then it talks about ways in which you'll use common assessments, analysis of data from common assessments, instructional adjustments. It doesn't say what student learning data will you show at the end of this.
But I think there's an opportunity here to get them thinking about, it's like almost, I don't wanna get into the whole S-N-A-R-T thing of the circle, but it's part of that about measuring it as indicated by. So, it is our goal that by using this project, we will see an improvement, an increase, a change in X amount of time to this extent. So that there's, because my concern would be that they do a project, and then they move on to a next project. The idea is that there is ongoing assessment and measurement to show how this, because, you know, in curriculum development, many times, and a real cool curriculum is developed, it's done, and then we go develop someone else that's just a school. So, that's, and I think it, you know, it circles back to what Erin's point is about having, knowing how this is going to lead to improved student learning.
Kathy is nailing something right now, though, that I think is key, because that digital learning plan that we're talking about is the one that rolls up through the schools. We're using the SAMR model and all this other stuff. And, I mean, I imagine that would be something that would be worked on in this period to be able to.
Yes, a number of different teams are specifically working on how they're integrating Chromebooks into freshman classes.
So, that's.
So, we have wrapped, Susan. Okay, no, go ahead.
If we're gonna have another discussion about.
We are. I was just about to say that, yeah. But go ahead.
Well, I just, I understand what you're saying about the assessment, but I think like, for instance, the developing common benchmarks for the music entambles, there's some stuff that just isn't measurable, you know? And the fact that, I would be a little leery of putting that stipulation on all the products that they do, because there's no pre-assessment data. It's not as though before you went into this early start, that you said, let's get. I mean, I know there's baseline data, and that you can go, but it's not the same student population. So, to measure that growth.
That makes sense, but there's gotta be some.
Right, no, I know.
There's gotta be some concrete desired outcome that we're working towards, otherwise, why do it?
And what's the need? Maybe you don't have pre-assessment, but why was it identified as a need to work on? So, you know, there are a lot of things related to.
I just think we, I think, I think we need. I just think we, I think, I think we need, we need some reasons why this is, why we want to say yes. Again, because this has come up before. And Mark, last comment, and then we're going to wrap this up.
Sure. Are you solo manager of this, or do you, with your assistant principals participate?
Assistant principals help, but I've been the primary person organizing it. Department chairs also help as well.
Okay.
When it's department-specific, then department chairs are helping.
And what are your thoughts on continuity for the next regime leader?
So one of my goals is to make sure that if we do have late starts again next year, that I've got plans in place so somebody new isn't coming in and having to try to reinvent the wheel. But then that person, you know, will have significant responsibility for helping oversee it, along with department chairs.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sure.
Would it be helpful to have somebody other than just me? Would it be helpful to have some teachers talk about things that they've done, or would you really prefer that I be kind of...
No, I think, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but, I mean, I mean, we've had a couple of teachers come in. I think we need to see this from an administrative perspective. And I think that, again, the anecdotal things are great, but I think it's more valuable for us to have a plan from you as to what this looks like. But, so with regards to this, why don't we, okay, so how does everybody, take the late start part of the discussion off the table, because we're going to revisit that. The rest of the calendar, does anybody have any concerns or questions about the rest of the calendar? Because if you don't, Lynn?
I was just wondering, September 20th is a late start. We just had two days of teachers before school started. Why do we need a late start September?
Well, that's the high school.
High school, yeah.
Well, the PD, I think you were saying is different than the...
It's separate, yeah. It's a separate program, which is what we need to see. So if there aren't any other concerning issues, other than the questions we have and that we're looking for answers on, on the late starts, with deference to those folks who want to plan their vacations, we won't vote on it, but is everybody okay with the rest of the calendar, so that we feel pretty good about it? Okay, we reserve the right to be able to change our minds, but at this point, the rest of the calendar looks pretty good, right?
Can I just ask a quick question? Are we not in favor of, is there anyone here that's not in favor of late starts based on, I mean, is it just like...
I'm not ready to vote on it. I, I mean, I think Kathy's got questions.
I'm in favor of late starts.
Right.
However, I want more information about what the products are, what the deliverables are, and how they're going to improve student...
Right, so I think we need that information before we finalize and vote on it, okay? I mean, there's no reason we have to rush this vote tonight, especially with outstanding requests for information, is that? Yeah, and actually, as I've been listening to you, I've been making some notes, and I think if you and I can connect, I've got some ideas I'd like to run past you. Great.
One more question. On the front end of the calendar, what were the considerations on what is the start date?
You mean starting before Labor Day or not starting before Labor Day?
Or how far in front to start?
Yeah, well, we have guidance from the contract on that. We're not allowed to start more than a week before Labor Day. But the feeling is that to start as early as we can, to get some good time in before the children take their MCAS test, and then also to have the end of the year not be too, with the snow days not bumping into the end of the, the end of the fiscal year. Those are the conversations there, and they end very much like having the two days, you know, at the front with the faculty only, the meeting greet day, and then the professional development day, classroom day.
And was there any concern or discussion about greater flexibility on that one-week limitation required by the contract in terms of early start, you know, starting maybe August another day or two earlier?
That would require, that would require a change in the contract.
I understand. So is there any discussion about the wish or desire for greater flexibility on that score?
I don't believe that there is. I'm not sure that there's any appetite for starting too early in August. I think, I remember when we were kids, we never went before Labor Day.
Yeah.
You know, I think we've got there.
Okay, so why don't we, if there aren't major concerns with the rest of the calendar and everybody's pretty comfortable with where it is, we're going to ask Dr. Graham to come back, so let's just identify this now, because the 27th is much too early, and the first is our, our public hearing on the budget. Do you want to try to squeeze it in that, or would you prefer to wait until the 15th of March?
It doesn't make any difference to me. As long as parents have an idea of the dates, though, I think that that's the key right now.
Right, and I think we've just addressed that, so...
It's really, the only thing you're looking at is the delayed start piece.
So we'll let you know about the first or the 15th, but one of those two dates, we'll have Dr. Graham back. But the calendar looks really good, and Dr. Graham, thank you for all your efforts.
Of course.
And Anne Marie, really appreciate the way this looks this year, so.
Could I make a little request?
You can.
The types of information that you're asking for will not be something that I will be able to pull together instantaneously. It'll take me a little while to pull it together. I will be in Florida for most of next week, and teachers will not be around, so the 15th would probably be an easier date for me to pull together more information for you.
That's great.
If I can make that request.
You can make that request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and enjoy your time. Well, you've got a lot of travel going on. All right.
One's in the inbox.
Thank you both, appreciate it. I think we can get on track real quickly. Next is a DECA donation on the conference and attendance table.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, Dr. Graham, you may even want to just join us again, as soon as we're done with the DECA donation, and talk just about the DECA trip that's scheduled, that they've signed off the conference for the three, three...
The state conference in March?
In Boston.
Do you want me to do that right now?
Yeah, March 9th. She's going to just do the DECA donation, but if you could do it right after that, we'd appreciate that. Thanks, we're just going to deal with DECA all at once.
I have a memo from Stavros Andropopoulos, and he is the business ed teacher at the high school, and he has received a donation on behalf of the Neshova DECA program, and the donation is $2,000 from the Clinton Savings Bank, and it's helped to help defray the costs associated with attending competitions. And he would like to say that DECA has 143 members this year, and the costs have grown exponentially along with membership, so.
Okay. And you want to take a couple, quick comments about the competition before we make a motion?
The conference that they're going to, is that what you're asking?
Is that why you asked him?
Yeah, that's why I asked him to stay, stay back, yeah, to talk to that. So this is just straightforward. I think that, I think it's wonderful that the donation has been put forward to help offset the costs and such, and it's a great program, and I think that they're producing some great product right now. It's really, I think it's a group on fire right now, so I'm very appreciative of the donation, and I just want to put, I strongly support the conference that they're going to, too, so. But I think, Pat, you need a motion right now to accept the money, right?
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions? Nope? Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for $2,000 donated by Clinton Savings Bank to the Neshova DECA Club.
Second. All right. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much, Clinton Savings Bank. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you so much. Really appreciate that support.
So just to quickly tee this up, and then Dr. Graham will turn it over to you. So as per your policy, the first statement in your policy says that all student trips, which include late night or overnight travel, must have prior approval by the superintendent of schools and school committee, which is why we're coming to you tonight for this. So yes, Dr. Graham's absolutely right, this, the trip is into Boston from March 9th to 11th. They're taking approximately ninety students, eighty-seven students, nine chaperones. This is a DECA State Career Development Conference, round two of the DECA season is what I've got here. So is there anything that you can offer? I know that you've signed off on it already, but anything you'd like to offer tonight?
This is an annual competition, so we have students who go to this each year, and then the results of that competition determine whether or not students qualify to go to the national competition. We've had tremendous success with this. Stavros has done, Stavros Andropoulos, the business teacher, has done a tremendous job when he's taken students to Boston in the past. He's very methodical about making sure we have no chaperones, making sure the kids are well-supervised. Our kids are always very well-behaved. We have an administrator, assistant principal who's going, Steve Cullinan, is going to be going on the strip as well, so there'll be lots of adults there to make sure that everyone is super well-behaved. I very strongly support this trip.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll let you go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, so we're almost back on track. The next item on the agenda is...
We have to vote for approval for that.
We haven't finished that up yet.
We have to vote for approval for the future.
We have to have approval.
Oh, to go to the overnight?
To do the overnight, yes. So we, I, I need...
So you need a vote to allow the students to...
Yeah, to do, to take this particular trip into Boston.
I'd like to make a motion for the school committee to approve the DECA club to attend the DECA State Career Development Conference for a three-day overnight, to be held at the Boston Marriott Copley Hotel in Boston. Don't see the dates, but...
March 9th.
March 9th through 11th.
Thank you, and a second, Kathy, and all those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, thank you. Now we can move on.
I'm trying to rush through, as I...
Sorry, sorry, don't mean to short-trip. DECA. Okay, so we've made some good headway on the budget, and the superintendent's going to share where she's at. I know that she's met with the finance subcommittee today, but I would like to, I think, we're doing, you guys are doing a great job, but I think we would like to still add, for your consideration, a school committee meeting on February 27th, which is next Monday? No, it's the Monday after the break, so that we can continue this work without being rushed, because while we don't have to have everything ticked and tied, we should be in a really just-about-there, ready-to-go place by our, our meeting on the first to the communities. So I'm proposing that we add a full, regular school committee meeting on February 27th, 2017, to begin at 6:00 PM. I'm trying to preserve that day just for budget discussion. I think there's one item I'm going to add to it that's really short, but I would like for your consideration, please consider adding that meeting. Does anybody have any questions?
What time? Normal time?
6:00 PM, please.
That's Monday, is that right?
Monday, the 27th. Yep. And if there aren't questions, I would love for someone to make a motion.
I'm, that we add an additional school committee meeting on Monday, September 27th, to begin at 7:00.
I mean, February 27th.
Oh, what did I say?
September, that's way late.
That's way late, or early. February 27th, begin at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. And a second?
Second.
I thought you would. Mark, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you all, really appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to turn a lot of this discussion on the FY18 budget over the superintendent, but there's a couple of things I just want to clarify. We've left this open-ended because I think the superintendent, in tandem with her team, Pat, and others, your directs, as well as some of the discussion with the finance subcommittee, we had several areas that we were interested in finding more information about. I know we're going to talk about athletics, tuition for extended day 3KK, and then you're going to give us an update on the budget. Before we do that, though, there was a comment that Nicole Oderkirk from STOW, one of our reps, wasn't able to make tonight's meeting, but she did share with superintendent and me, she wanted to level-set something that was reported at the last meeting, and I guess there have been some questions from folks in STOW, so I'm just going to read what she wrote. I think it's probably the easiest. She said, I planned on mentioning the exchange that she and superintendent Clint, she had with Patrick Perkins, who is our interim principal over at Hail, because there was a concern about next year's homeroom totals for Hail. She said the incoming sixth grade will have a total of five homerooms, just like they've had all through their center careers. And she said it was, unfortunately, it wasn't accurately presented in the local paper, so she wanted to make sure that the incoming sixth grade, that, she said, we are discussing the incoming sixth grade, not the incoming seventh grade. And would I please clarify that for folks tonight? So I don't know if there's anything else you need to add to that?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward, actually, to be honest with you. And Patrick Perkins was just wonderful in terms of dealing with it. We had gone back and forth and talked about some additional staff, and I think you'll recall that I had that discussion with you folks as well, and he came back and said, I really don't need that, but what I do need are these other couple smaller positions to help the rotation work smoother. And so those particular pieces have been left in the budget. So it's not that there's an additional full FTE staff member required.
Neil?
While we're on the topic of level-setting, I've got two other things that kind of need to be done, and it's not, it's not to cause any embarrassment or anything, but it's level-setting...
No, 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 with regards to the budget?
With regards to the budget. So it was reported that there was actually a decrease in the budget announced in the budget workshop, and that was not the case. There's actually a substantial increase that was listed, but it's as the sausage is being made, so it's before things were pared down. And I just, I'm really wary that that information being out there is going to mislead people into thinking that there's suddenly these budget cuts, and then if there is any budget increase, then it's going to create an unfair perception. The other thing is, the cost of the administration article that was listed for the turnover administration, there are two items in there that are incorrect. Masbo and the forensic audit, and actually, Melant and Heath coming back for the Q and A session, are not part of the administration turnover. Masbo was started prior to our last original superintendent leaving. That conversation started during the MASC conference, in which we found that some of the information we were getting on the budget was not aligning with the MASC recommended best performance or...
Practices.
Best practices. That led to some conversations with some people involved in Masbo, and then eventually led to the Masbo review itself. The Masbo review and the findings there then led to further questions, and then there were some exchanges, one which is online and been referred to before. A taped conversation in which the person at the time informed us that some of the information we requested, we will not be getting. That was a bit disconcerting, and in my mind, that's what triggered, in my head, any suggestion of a forensic audit for that to take place at that point in time, so we can further get the details. And it's a good thing that we did do that.
Okay, so...
Has nothing to do with the administration.
No, no, and it makes sense, and I would just encourage anyone, any news outlet, any of you, to have any questions or would like us or the superintendent to review numbers before they're printed, to make sure that everybody is reporting accurately, and I know there's a lot of information, and some of it can be really complex. And please, please do reach out. I think, you know, we'll be extremely responsive, because it's really important that the community have the accurate representation of what we're doing. Many people don't have time to watch the meetings, read the minutes. What they read is the paper, and if the information isn't tweaked, or is tweaked, it kind of could skew some of the work that we're doing and create some concerns as those that I know, I didn't realize you were going to bring that up, some of the concerns I've had. Dr. Clenchey, I just promoted you.
Just, if I could just speak, too, you know, it's interesting, I had a school committee chair reach out to me probably about a week ago, and knew that we'd just gone through a forensic audit, and they're in the middle of a superintendent search. And he asked me, he said, you know, knowing what you know now from when you came in, is this something that you would suggest that we take a look at doing as we're in this process for getting a new superintendent? And I said, without hesitation, I would definitely say it's so well worth the time, the money, the exercise itself is just fantastic. And I don't want to speak for Pat, but I think that we learned so much along the way about, like being, for me especially, being so new, along the way about what was being done, how the practices were being handled for expenditures, or budgeting, or whatever. So it was this incredible growth experience that was very specific to this school district as a result of that forensic audit. So I know that that's something that also was said right at the very beginning of this process, with a new superintendent coming in, it makes sense to do this. So I, I would also just wanna put that nugget of information back out there. It was incredibly helpful for both Pat and myself.
In historical context, Dr. Bates, when he was here.
Yep.
He did, where, and this is where this all came from, as far as new administration forensic audit. It came out in a conversation he had during one of the school committee meetings, in which he said, as he teaches, as an adjunct professor at, at, in the college, that is one of the things he recommends to the people coming out, is a forensic audit, but that is not necessarily what tipped at least some of us here into looking for that forensic audit.
So I think the takeaway from all of this, and I appreciate your comments, Neil, and superintendent Clenchey, thank you for that. I think the takeaway is, if there's a question about motive with the school committee or the administration, please let us know. We would be happy to give you the absolute truth, that's what we've done all along, and we will continue to do that. So please let us know if you have any questions. Okay, let's move on. I'm gonna turn the rest of this portion of the meeting over to you.
Great, thank you. So we're gonna talk numbers, we're gonna talk athletics, we're gonna talk about all kinds of stuff in this section. So I'm gonna tee up, and, and, um, what I'd like to do, Tanya, i- is bring both you and, and Dr. Graham back to the table for a moment, if, if you don't mind, for actually several moments. And I'm gonna explain my thinking in having you join us tonight. And I think that I, uh, Dr. Graham, I know that Chairman Remoska said something, I, I wanna say something to you too tonight. You approached me a while ago about this, so this was not a surprise to me. Certainly, I saw it coming, um, in, in terms of a letter of resignation, although I still have to say, when I actually got it the other day.
It's a vacation, it's not a resignation.
It still, it still hit me. I remember saying to you, "Oh, my gosh," after I got over the anger, because we did have that little, that moment.
I was afraid you were gonna hit me for a moment.
That moment between the two of us. But you know, when you kinda got, when I kinda got beyond that, and I realized, and, and I think I came back and said to you, "Wow, what an opportunity to do this with your family at this point in time in your lifetime, uh, just incredible." And I know that I shared with you, you know, looking back at raising my own kids, it's those times that we were away that, that they remember those memories you made for a lifetime, and this is just a phenomenal experience. I, I also wanna say, though, how much I will miss you. I just thoroughly enjoy working with you. I know that we've had the blessing of spending a lot of different time together, uh, sometimes good, bad, ugly, but mostly, mostly good, and I love what you bring to the table. I love the grounded common sense approach that you bring to our administrators around the table. You're a leader amongst leaders, and I just really respect what you've brought to the table, so I thank you so much. It has been an absolute pleasure for me, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I asked Tanya to come in to see me the other day, and I think that, uh, one of the reasons why I, I, I wanted to meet with her is because I kept copious notes at our Saturday workshop. Remember way back, the very first budget workshop? And I thought, "At some point in time, we need to kinda bring this around." And when we take a look and we talk about cost centers, and we talk about things like extended day or food services, or, you know, one of the big cost centers that we have in our world is the, the world of athletics. And there's a lot of things to think about, and I, I made notes from that Saturday, and I went through some things with her, and I said, "These are just some things that I'm thinking about." Now, I wanna also be clear, tonight is really just to open the Pandora's box, if you will, about discussion, about the world of athletics within Nishoba Regional District. And so I talked through a number of different things. We're not looking for answers, we're not looking for, but philosophically, where do we stand on some of this? Philosophically, what do we feel is the school district's portion versus a parent's portion? Or do we not think like this, maybe when we've been doing a practice and we're going back, say, "We're not comfortable with that. Now is the time." Now, this doesn't have a strong impact on our budget at this moment in time, so this is not something that's gonna hold up our budget. And like everything else, I think we have to be very thoughtful about our programs, about what we're offering in our schools, how we're doing it, and I think the same thing has to be applied to the world of athletics. And so with that in mind, I started talking to, to Tanya, I said, "I'm not looking for answers, but I want us to think about some of these things." So in some case, it was, it was specific things like uniforms, like, how are we ever bringing those uniforms? What are we doing? How does that even work? How, who keeps track of that? Who's paying for that? Who, what, what constitutes a uniform? Where does the helmet lie in all of this? Because these are things that I've heard over and over again. So I, I, at some point in time, though not tonight, but we wanna have that kinda discussion. How are fees arrived at? I really don't know how your fees have been arrived at. Is there, is it corny lately? Is it not? Is it historical? How has that all come to pass? How do we know what the sports, each individual sport is costing us? I don't know how deep we've looked into that, and maybe we have, and that's great. If there's some history here that we can spring from, that's, that's wonderful. If not, this is as good a time as any to start looking at this. What's happening in other districts? What's happening in other districts in terms of fees, in terms of costs? Are there cost sharing that we haven't thought about before? What groups do you belong to? How does that look? How do we share our programs? How do we share our ideas? I talked about parity. I thought, you know, are we, do we really have parity between sports? I'm not sure that we do. The whole Title IX discussion comes into play here. You know, all of these things, it, to me, it is truly a Pandora's box, and I'm not wanting to open it so wide open that we can never find the answers, but I wanted to lay some things on the table tonight and say, "Let's have some discussion." Again, I, I just see this as an opening opportunity. I see maybe Tanya coming back maybe in a month or two months, and we, and we can take a look at it again for, uh, some specific topics, maybe at that point in time, the school committee will say, "You know, we've thought about what you said, but we really wanna zone in on this," or "that," or what have you. Gate receipts is another thing, so how, what is, how does that work with it? We've talked about the bond on the field, how does that work? We've talked about, do we have to set, should we be setting up some sort of a contingency line for replacement of that field? All of this stuff. Then the other thing that we talked about is this halftime position, and I said to, to Tanya when we were talking about it the other day, I, I, of course, I'm looking at it from a fiscal lens right now. I'm looking at it through the lens of, who's doing the bookkeeping? Who's keeping track of things? What program are you using? Do you even have the right software? I don't know. Has anyone ever brought that up to you? And again, I'm not looking for answers, Tony, for me. So, but all of that kinda thing, and then she was really good, good, because she came back and said, "Well, actually, I'm not even really looking at, through that lens, that's a piece of it, but my lens is really over here," and it was an area that I hadn't even thought of. So I thought, you know, until we bring this to the table and open some discussion, it's just gonna be questions with no answers. And so, you know, I, I said to her, and I wanna be really clear, this is not a Tanya Rich thing, not at all. She just happens to be the person in the position. This is really but a Nishoba athletic discussion. It's something we value, it, it's a part of our core fiber, uh, uh, as a district, and, and it's something we wanna continue to keep as strong as possible. So what do we do to make sure that that infrastructure is strong? And make sure there's parity where it needs to be, make sure that we're taking care of any small and large issues. And are we thinking, like, I know that we had this discussion this morning with the, uh, the finance subcommittee, what is that larger plan? I mean, we talked, with the capital plan being a three to five years, what are we doing here? How, and who's, who does that? Who oversees it? So to me, there, these are some of the thoughts that I captured that did that Saturday morning when we were talking about it, and I thought, "Okay, so let's put this on the table tonight and start the discussion." So with all of that being said, uh, maybe, Tanya, maybe you can just give us a little bit of a takeaway. It's, I know you and I talked the other day, but you, you had a little bit of a takeaway from our meeting that morning as well, down a totally different avenue. So why don't you talk about that a little bit, and then let's have some discussion.
All right, so, you know, I know we talked about that day, you know, what each sport costs, and what does that look like in the fees? So what I did over the last couple of weeks is, I worked off of averaging numbers of last year, and I made a cost per student for every single sport. And again, um, so one side just breaks us down by season, the other side breaks it down by the most expensive sport, um, to the least expensive sport that we're running at the high school. It should be definitely not calories for everyone.
This is exciting. I don't think we've ever seen this.
And I like the days, this, this project took days.
Yeah, it did to the first day, but it was really good for me. Like, I felt very good. And again, I want, this is based on last year's numbers, and these were a lot of averages, so, you know, equipment amounts were averages, and, you know, every now and then, there's a year where you may need a lot of equipment needs, or you may need that big ticket item of like goals, or pole vault pads, or things that, these are just averages for equipment. These are our transportation numbers, you know, I rounded up from whatever the actual numbers was. I went through all of our transportation logs from last year. And this is based, like I said, on last year. We, I do wanna make a comment, though, that, our ice hockey team went to the state championship last year, so they had almost a month extra of ice hockey. So that's transportation and ice time. Football went to a state championship last year, so that was more transportation. We had Western Mass, we also had Gillette, so those were long days, so their transportation was a little higher than usual. Girl soccer had a very good playoff run, uh, so did field hockey, went to Western Mass. So a lot of this too is based on, many of our teams, um, last year did very well, so that's gonna add to any, you know, transportation officials where they're not always just the common and average, um, cost per year.
So. Wow, we need to digest this.
Yeah, this is a lot, like, when I was thinking over, like, you know, why are these numbers a little different, you know, and then I was talking to Paris, I'm like, you know, ice hockey played an extra month last year. That's, you know.
Yes, but if you want, do we wanna talk about hockey or not? Do we want me to, you wanna wait up? Because, 'cause it, 'cause, 'cause, because.
Well, I, I think one of the things that we wanna do tonight is put some of the questions or some of the concerns, and again, our goal is, Tanya, to be clear, our goal is never to put you on the spot. This is just discussion, that's all this is, so please don't, don't feel attacked, or don't feel like, 'cause that's not it. It's just us trying to work it all through, right?
Well, we won't do that.
So I, yeah, I was thinking that you're going to, I'm saying that for, for.
We told her before she walked in the room, we took her aside.
Oh, of course. So I, but I do think that this is a night that if you've got some of those, like, questions at the top of your head, again, we're not looking to her for the answers tonight, but I think it's a good night to say, "Hey, these are some things that we're thinking about, and these are some things we'd like you, you to look into," so that she can go back and, and, and almost give her some, a little bit of guidance in some of the areas you'd like her to, to dig a little deeper in.
Cool. Can I have a?
Sure, Mark.
Another question. So the numbers are sort of more or less approximate, they're not, um, precise, is that inaccurate? Would you rounded them to get to the nearest hundred on a couple of columns?
Yes, for transportation and for equipment, I, I just rounded up, because I was going through every P O from last year and trying to break it up, so I could've easily missed something.
Got it.
But I was trying, you know, like I said, I went through my entire binder of last year and tried to pull this.
So good approximation is the point of view we should take.
Yes. Very, very close, yep.
So does this, oh, there it is. Okay, so, so take the transportation out, because that's part of our deal, right? Is that we pay the transportation? Or should we be doing?
I don't know, I mean, I.
No, I'm, I'm asking in general.
We, we can't charge for transportation to get to school. I think that transportation for sports is different than transportation for school.
As part of the full.
Well, I think it's good to take a look at that programmatically, just to see what the, the cost is, and then kinda figure things from there. The, and the other thing that would be, I think, nice to, have maybe a breakdown, just a couple, sorry, a couple more columns, but, um, the, like, for instance, ice hockey, how many teams is that? Do we have a freshman, J V, and varsity team? You know what I mean? So if we have a breakdown to know how many teams this is actually applies to.
Yeah, okay.
You know, there are times when you may look at something and say, "Well, you know, you got a freshman team, you got a varsity team, but maybe it's borderline freshman, can we make a J V team instead of the two?" I'm, you know, and I'm not proposing cuts or anything, but I'm just saying that sort of logic when, when looking at funding. And then the other thing is, um, how many coaches? Like, there's stipends listed, but how many coaches do, do the stipends apply to?
Okay.
Are, are, like, are they fixed stipends? Like, a co, if you're a coach, you get X number of dollars, period, no matter what the, or.
No, it's, it's, so it's in the teacher's contract, and there's a stipend schedule, and it's, uh, they have four different steps, and a different percentage, depending on what step they're on. And then that goes up, it's based on our base salary, so that goes up a little bit every year.
Okay, so, uh, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Ca, thank you, yes, and Dennis, thank you.
Just, um, no, thank you, Tanya, this is a tremendous amount of work, and it helps, and, and you know that I have no athletic ability or mindset. I have a difficult time walking in high heels, but, so.
Questions, questions, words, words.
That's the, so, all right, where does the co, cost of coaches come into play here? Is that separate from this? And maybe that's a good question.
So, okay, so if we look at this, so it's listed by sport.
Yep.
The number of students is the exact, exact number of students who played that, those sports last year.
Yep.
The stipends are the coaching stipends.
Okay, so in that column is what our contractually we pay the coaches, right?
Yes, so for example, for boys' ice hockey, we have a varsity head coach, a varsity assistant coach, and a J V coach.
Okay.
So that money right there is divided, it's not equal, but that's divided between three coaches.
Yes, okay, no, no, that's good, that helps. Okay, so now, when you go to the last column, the cost per student, that's not what we charge kids, right?
No, so this is what it costs to run the program per student.
To run, okay.
And where's the student? Yes.
Maybe that I was gonna ask that.
That's what I was gonna say.
So what does the student pay, and then the difference between what the student pays and this, how is that covered?
What is the difference?
What is the difference, but then who pays it?
Because I think that's, that's, that gets to the actual question, right?
And that gets back to user fees and everything else, and that's why, and again, I, I do this in, in a, a larger picture, you know, and I said that as well, I know I've said this to Chairman Remoska before, but my goal is that by, by about May, everybody knows exactly what the costs are gonna be going into September, whether it's a change in user fee or not, a change in extended day or not, or, so you should be seeing all of this kinda coming together as we're laying all on the table. One of the things that we're looking at in all of this is to your question, how much of these programs really costing us, and what are we really bringing in? And is it really covering the cost, or is it just offsetting the cost? So your question is absolutely spot on. That's exactly one of the things that we're looking at.
Okay, so, yeah, 'cause that's my, that's my biggest question. If this is, you know, the, the total cost, if you will, and I agree with Neil, would help to see it broken down by like J Vs, freshmen, et cetera? Because, yeah, so if kids are paying a user fee that's less than that, and there's a difference, where does that money come from? Is, but how much money are we talking about, and where does it come from?
But the, and then the other thing, not to, see, this is where it gets to be, but that's why it's a starting, it's to create the framework, right? But there are also additional fees, right? For various things that parents may pay for certain sports, they may pay for submit, like, I think, ice hockey pays for practice time or something like that.
Yes, is that still around here?
So that's, so that's.
No, so.
Oh, okay.
So that's good to know, how much those parents are actually paying in addition to. I, I think that's, when we figure out the whole scheme, we really need to know that also. You know, 'cause some sports aren't, some sports are, some sports have rentals that they're paying for. Um, I know we're, my daughter's doing, uh, Nordic, Nordic right now, and so there's a couple hundred dollars, season pass plus rentals, uh.
Well, I think we have to look at the sport, the number of kids that are in it, and what is the general budget being forced to cover, because it's a cost recovery program in some respects, and I, I mean, I, you know, like, like, for instance, like, I'm not, we don't have to get into the weeds on this, I'm just throwing it out as an example. You know, I've had a few people challenge the fact that we, um, we cover just about all the costs for football, other than the user fee. We cover the cost of the helmets, we cover the cost of the uniforms, we cover the cost of the field maintenance, which I contend is not fair, because there are other sports that play on that field. So, but then, for instance, boys' lacrosse, they buy their own helmets. So why is that team buying its own helmets, but the football team isn't? And, and, you know, it's not about my kids, because I have a kid that plays both sports, so that's not why I bring this up. These are questions that I've heard. We don't have a point of view on that. There is inequity, and we need to make it more equitable.
But that's what I'm saying, so if you're listing what the costs are.
Right, I'm just giving an example.
So what's the buy-in for the, for the particular? And there may be nothing, though. You may look at this and, and we may all say, "Wow, this, it's very, it's very flat across the board when it boils down to everything," you know, I mean, but to have those numbers, it really, it allows that, and it creates more transparency for the parents, too, to understand what's going on with the individual sports and everything.
Right, well, and, yeah, people are asking questions, so, um, Mark.
What would be some examples of, um, expenditures that somebody pays that you might not list on here?
So what we have for additional fees, and again, going off last year, um, boys' ice hockey, for varsity boys' ice hockey, um, the varsity players paid an extra five hundred and sixty dollars on top of their user fee for practice ice time. Uh, the J V hockey players paid an extra four hundred and sixty in addition to their user fee for ice time. The girls' hockey program paid an additional three hundred and thirty dollars, which covered the officials, 'cause that's part of our co-op agreement. Nishoba wasn't, uh, responsible for officials in our girls' ice hockey program. Um, the Alpine ski team paid an additional three hundred and seventy-five dollars for their season pass at Nishoba Valley, in addition to their user fee. The Nordic ski team paid an additional eighty dollars for a season pass. The swim team paid an additional hundred and sixty-five dollars, um, for their practice time for the pool. And those are, again, those are the av, the, uh, the costs, just on, based on last year's.
Right, so they could very mealy ear, deciding what's going on.
Very mealy ear, yes.
And do those pass through on the Nishoba accounting system, or are they done directly?
Yeah, it goes, it goes directly into the u, high school user fees.
Do you have a question? Are you sure? Cathy does.
Yeah, uh, but you sure you don't have like? Yeah, uh, but you sure you don't have like?
Yeah, I got the video, sorry.
So, um, the athletic revolving account, from the information we got at the workshop on twenty eighth, was, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, so that's money in that account. What's the relationship between that and all of this?
That was sort of my question, is your concern over parity?
Yeah.
The fact that gate receipts like for football get invested in the football program and not in?
It was, it's not even that, I, I think it's broader than that, to be honest with you. I, I think, going back to Neil's point, um, and this isn't really getting to answer your question, but maybe at the end of all of this, we're gonna find that everything is more equal than we've realized. But maybe not, and if there's some inequities, then I think we need to figure them out. To your point, you know, I, this kind of ties in with the, the field, I'm gonna go back to the field and the fact that I really think there needs to be some sort of sta, I'm just putting this on the table, some sort of stabilization account set up, that we start to put money in on a regular basis to take care of that field, because at some point in time, we're gonna have to do something. So who really pays for that? I'm not sure, like, if that field was to go tomorrow, who ultimately pays for that? Does that come out of the three communities then, or, do you know what I mean? No, I'm just saying, right? So I, I, I think that we need to be proactive in some of these areas. With, with regards to, to your, your line of thinking, I mean, one of the things that I'm looking at too, and we've had this discussion even earlier, um, and, and this morning, the bond for that field, where does that come out of? Where, who really pays for that? Can that be offset by some of these costs? Cause I kind of feel it should be, because that's, that's who's using it, do you know what I mean? So, so that's kind of, I, I think, I don't think I have a really good answer for it, but just know that philosophically, I'm questioning a lot of it.
But just, and I, and I'm not, if, if there's no answer at this point, that's fine, but I want, with the, there's, like I said, I mentioned the amount that's in the revolving account. And is, so when we look at, there's going to be a difference between the foster student, uh, what they pay in a user fee, and then there's a difference amount. Is that where that comes, what that's used for, or what is that used for?
Can you, can you explain, I, I don't know if you're taking in her, the question at all.
Well. You wanna know where the user fee goes?
No, 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 no.
No, she's looking for.
Where does the money come from that goes into the?
Where does it come out of now for the differential?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, yeah, well, sort of, I wanna, I'm looking at the amount in the athletic revolving account, which is about, uh, two hundred and twenty-three. And, um, I'm looking at these costs, I'm wondering what the relationship is between the athletic revolving account and all the expenses for athletics.
Well, the, the athletic revolving account itself is, um, the account we use to deposit the gate receipts.
Right.
So that would be for the football field and for hockey games if we, we are the home team, right? And the basketball field, so all those gate receipts go into that athletic revolving.
So that's what this represents?
Yes, that's what that revolving account is.
So that's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for the gate receipts.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what exactly we're looking at.
Um, this is what we got on, uh, the January twenty-eighth at the workshop.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so then, and, and in looking at it in the two years I've been on here, there's always been a lot in there, no matter when we look at it. Does that get spent down? I, I don't understand.
In the past, no, it has not.
It just sits there?
Right.
Or it has just?
Well, it doesn't just sit there, because, um, in, in the past, the way that the budget was set up, we offset, at year end, when we went over on particular lines, we offset it into, um, the user fee accounts.
Okay, no, no, I, I understand that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you understand that?
We offset, wait, say that again, you off?
What we did before was if we had expenditures in the general fund.
Yeah.
And they went over budget, we allocated the expenditures. At some point in time, they were, there was a journal entry and we charged the user fee accounts.
So something that, okay, so that came out of the front of the audit.
So they, that's what, how the user fee.
So it wasn't, it wasn't?
The user fees first.
Yeah.
And then if at the end of the year, there have been times when different accounts just didn't cover.
Unrelated to athletics?
No.
Okay, that's what I think now, okay, okay.
They used it, if there wasn't enough money, say.
So that was one of the areas in the forensic audit that was in area, it needed improvement, so.
Right, that's exactly right, right.
So, get, so this is used then to offset costs for football and hockey? Is that what that revolving account money is for?
All sports.
No, it's all sports.
All sports.
But where does the money to offset the two sports Kathy just mentioned come from? Do we know?
Well.
I know, it's okay, we.
So, no, it would. User fees first.
We're just trying to figure out how it works.
And then, yeah. And then it would come from the re, the athletic revolving account.
So shouldn't this be close to zero at some point in the year then?
Well, I would.
I know, it's, I mean, just put it on the list of questions, you don't have, you don't have to go into it now, but that's what I'm trying to get my head around.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So we, let me have a different point of view. The, the, the gate receipts have been accumulating in this revolving fund. Looking, I'm looking now at the sheet from the forensic audit.
Sure. Yep.
So since four, twenty fourteen, the opening balance was about a hundred and nine thousand. Then it's increased more or less forty to fifty thousand dollars each of the three years since then, without significant withdrawals. And one conception someone could have, namely me, is that perhaps that's going to be paying up the bond or perhaps a stabilization fund for the athletic. That's the gate receipt fund.
Yes, yes.
Distinct from the athletic fees that the students are paying for their sports,
Yeah.
which might be called the varsity club or the, um, high school user fees.
Yep.
So your, so the two hundred and twenty-eight is, is that the athletic revolving, that's, is that the user fee fund?
Those are our expenditures that are being charged to that.
Right.
But I think this is getting back to exactly why this is on the table tonight, cause we need, we need a perspective, we need to know where we stand on this. Again, not tonight, not to put anybody on the spot, so.
So, um, before you go, Lynn, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, with all of these athletics, what are the boosters doing?
And what are the boosters doing? I mean, they do a lot of work and they raise a lot of money, but what is that money used for, do we know?
They are completely separate from the school.
Right, but what do they typically, I mean, with all their good work, what do they typically do to, cause they do things to support students? Because I think that needs to be taken into consideration too, that's all, you know, parents doing some great stuff.
Those are, those are usually the things they purchase, going above and beyond what the district is providing. They've done the sound system in the upper gym, they've done the sound system for the stadium field, they have purchased, yeah, like, big ticket items that
Wow.
we need but don't have the school budget to purchase.
Yep.
Um, they purchased a hundred cushion chairs, or eighty cushion chairs for the gym, for, you know, volleyball, basketball, so that's all new. Right now, we're working on hopefully getting a brand new scorer's table for the gym. I'm just waiting a little bit, cause I need to have a good storage area for that before I let them, you know, spend thousands of dollars on a new scorer's table. So it's the, it's the things that are above and beyond. They're looking at right now, I think they're gonna get a portable speaker so we can have somebody announce our baseball and softball games this spring. We tried it out last year for baseball, we had a parent volunteer, we used the band's portable speaker, and the parents loved it, the kids loved it, they were playing music, they were announcing, you know, batters, it was kind of like you were at Fenway. So it's, they bought wind screens, Fenway and Nishoba.
Yeah.
Um, it's those little things that just, you know, help out.
Okay, that's helpful.
Bought portable sheds for different fields to keep equipment, they've bought teams, you know, pop-up nets or, you know, some teams will fundraise money and buy T-shirts or, you know, extra equipment.
That's great, um, thank you for that, Neil.
So, I, and, and Mark's alluded to this, I mean, we've got a, a huge surplus we need to decide in, in that revolving. We need to decide how to, how to use it. I agree with Mark, I think sensible one-time initiatives such as, um, you know, establishing a stabilization fund, cause we know that there's a clock that's ticking.
Yeah.
On, on that repair, and we do not, in my opinion, we do not wanna pass that on to the towns or anything, you know?
Right.
Or even have that conversation, we wanna be able to say, here's the check.
It's ours and we're taking care of it, yeah.
And we're done. Uh, same thing with the bond, if we can create some way of, of year after year, being able to manage that bond, I think that's showing some responsibility on our end, uh, to the towns. So, so that's great. We have to identify how much money we have coming in, where it's coming in, and, and when I say how much and where, we've got an idea, cause there's numbers, but really dissecting that up a little bit more and, and then understanding, so we can put together, you can put together some sort of program that's going to be able to achieve these, these costs, whether we do, use it to defray certain costs for, you know, uh, whatever. There's a huge conversation and there's, there's just a lot of, of, of aspects to this.
Well, and I think that, you know, if, you know, we're, the finance subcommittee, you guys are tasked with working with the superintendent on this, right? To provide a recommendation, but it's gotta be, you know, when I use Kathy Codyan's, you know, thematic word for the year, it's gotta be sustainable. And this is gonna build sustainability without dependency on the general fund, which is what we're trying desperately to get away from.
Right.
So that, that, that makes sense.
This is another aspect of the budget, the schools, that hasn't had a lot of visibility.
Right.
Or transparency that's available, and I think if we achieve our goals, it's gonna be there and we'll have some straightforward ways of handling things.
So, so.
Mark.
Mark has, I'm sorry.
Could I ask, what are the usual fees for a student who's participating in a sport?
One fifty, per student, per season.
Is it per sport, per season, so three seasons a year?
And there's a cap, family cap? There is no, I thought there was a family cap, okay. So how are we competitively, not even competitive, comparative?
So, this is just, um, based on our league, the mid-watch league. I broke it up into conference, um, the Midland Conference is on top and those are the schools that we compete against and the Wachusett Conference. So the, the Midland Conference is the larger schools, um, the Wachusett Conference is the smaller schools, and this is, um, the breakdown of user fees per school. And if there are any additional fees that schools charge. And there are a few, some schools don't charge extra fees for other sports, they take it all into their budget and they don't charge anything extra, um, and other schools do. And I was gonna ask you is, if you give me some schools that you want me to add to this, cause I know we probably wanna compare ourselves to other schools, that I will do that research and come back, cause I know, you know, we don't always compare perfectly to some of these schools in our league.
To what extent do you have people saying, I would love to do a sport, but I'm, my family's not equipped? Is there a population you can count for that?
Only handful. I'd say a total per year is probably less than twenty-five.
But those people, if, if they qualify for, do you use the free lunch?
Free, reduced lunch, yes.
They'll have their usual lunch and we can.
So, so one of the things that I'd like, and we don't have to talk about it now, I just wanna put it out there for consideration. Um, you guys, with, um, Tanya, Dr. Graham, and finance subcommittee, we, if we don't have a family cap, I am personally a little bit concerned about people who have three and four kids and their kids play sports every season, and that's a big burden.
Yep.
So, could we look at a possible cap?
Actually, Tanya and I had this very discussion the other day, because I, I said the exact same thing to her. And, and especially if you've got kids, like, both my kids were so active in sports, right, played every single season, it's a lot of money.
It is a lot.
And we definitely have some families that have two or three kids playing per season, um.
And, and there's, I, I know you mentioned a couple of, of the costs to participate in a program, but there's some additional things, like downhill skiing, they buy their tickets, but they also need the equipment.
Correct, right.
In order to, so that, there's a cost associated with that too, and I'm not, I'm not.
The majority of our sports, the majority of our sports do have to have the equipment to compete.
So when you put the grid together, when you add the columns, can you just let us know what equipment is purchased by the district? Not, not, you don't have to identify every piece, but just, you know, it's a shared cost or it's, the district assumes the cost or the student assumes the cost of the equipment. I think that would be helpful, because if, if we're gonna look at what this impact is financially to families, we need to look at the whole picture. I think, yeah, Mark?
Can you, do you have a sense or have you attempted to do an unduplicated number of, um, students? You list here nine hundred and eighty-eight individuals.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that's six hundred, it's four hundred kids over the course of a year? Have you, have you actua, attempted to try to get a sense of that?
Yes, I actually did that, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I did, do, broke it down, I think it was a year or two ago, but how many one, two, and three sport athletes we had, um, mostly one and two, we don't have many three sport athletes anymore.
Really?
Mm-hmm. But I don't think it's because of cost, I think it's because of specialization and kids focusing on one sport and playing year round.
Actually, we listed multiple sport.
And it's, yeah.
Multiple sport.
Um, my turn, okay, all right, so I'm sorry. Okay, so I think this has been good, good, Tanya, thank you so much for bringing this in. Can we get these online so that people can take a look at them themselves? I mean, that's, this is so helpful, really appreciate it. Um, and then as far as next steps, um, finance and?
So I, well, I think a couple of things, uh, first of all, if there are, if there are questions that are coming out of tonight's, uh, that discussion, once you get home, you get a chance to look at this stuff, if you've got some questions, if you can funnel them through the chair and then she can funnel them out, we really appreciate that. And again, that will give, uh, Tanya some further guidance. In the meantime though, I think, Tanya, you got some very good guidance tonight, you know, um, the, the notion of maybe, um, I was thinking too, you and I can talk offline, but I think I'd break them down, the stipends a little bit differently, I think I'd add a user fee column. I, I think we need to, the differential exactly as Kathy Codyan had said earlier, I think we can do some of that and, and just refine the chart a little bit. But I, I thank you so much, because I think you just did an amazing job of all of this work and, and so, very, very appreciative of it. And again, let's keep in mind, this is the start of a conversation.
Neil.
The only other thing, and we talked about this, uh, today in, uh, FinCom, was, um, uncollected user fees. And how last year that kind of, we don't, we never had a whole conversation, but, um, and I don't even think you were involved in this, um, but unfortunately, was a list that was up on the wall, it probably shouldn't have been there, um, but it had fifty or sixty names that were uncollected and this was, um, in July, I think it was, that, that I just happened to be there to turn, so, well. So, that being said, we have in food, in food services, I know Brooke and Pat have worked on putting the mosaic system in, which allowed for, you know, credit cards and, and just easier ways to pay. And I know today you had talked about maybe.
I would love to explore something like that with her, and I think too, Tanya, before you go, like, I, I do want you to talk about your vision of what, when you look at this, this position, this, uh, 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 the additional ask that you've asked for, for next year, maybe if you and Perry could, I'd like, because her perspective is different than mine, and I'd like you to share your perspective. But that's kind of separate from this, but it just made me, you know, spring to that line of thinking.
So why don't we do that, and so I just wanna make sure, Kathy, you had your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I thought you did, okay, so are we all good with, with Tanya on this?
Yeah, I'll sort of report for uncollected fees, because the way it works is, so a senior cannot graduate and get graduation tickets until fees are paid. So, you know, that's, and I ran through it quickly last year, for last year's, with Pat on the phone a few weeks ago, there definitely was not fifty to sixty, um, so.
So it's been collected, which is awesome?
Uh, yeah.
But we still go through, it creates an instability year over year though, so if we have to wait three years, somebody's uncollected, then they pay a graduation, it's still, so, and it's not, we can do it offline, we can take this offline, but if we can create more of a stability, you know, just normalcy with the, that's really what we.
Yeah, that, that passes as well.
Right, and I wonder what.
I'm sorry, it's the athletic, it's the student, athletic.
Okay, so, um, next steps on this part of the discussion are?
So I think the next steps are now, if you've got additional questions, if you could rifle, uh, rifle them through, funnel them through Chairman Lomosco, and, and then we can go back after and have some further discussion, we can go back and do some refining to this. I see maybe bringing Tanya back maybe in, um, April, for example, um, for some further discussion. What are you thinking?
So, uh, for the general discussion, but I don't know if the finance subcommittee and you are, have made any adjustments in the budget on?
No, we, we have not had that discussion, and I don't want it to hold up our budget process, and that, that was the type of discussion we had this morning.
Okay, so, that, so I don't know if I, I think I might not have made myself, um, this discussion is broader understood, so are there any discussion points or any levers that have been pulled in the budget when you get into that on, on athletics?
Not right now, is there something that's pending, is it?
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit, because I feel like we're plowing, and it's not athletics, I'm not picking on it. It would be, you know, call it something else, call it cake baking. It would be, you know, call it something else, call it cake baking, I don't care, but, um, I just feel like we're pouring money into it, but we don't really see where it's going. And I'm not saying we have to get into a, a deep analysis on it, but there are a couple of low hanging fruit that I think we should, I'll talk to the finance subcommittee and.
Well, and the other, the other thing that, again philosophically, I think that we need to talk about, like that, the field and the, the debt bond, I think that's something that we should have some further discussion on, this stabilize, some sort of stabilization. I think that this all bears discussion right now, it really does need to.
Honest, to be honest with you, and Mark, correct me if you see any perspective, but I don't know if we can get that entire framework.
No, 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 no.
Put together, and I, I think it's almost impossible task.
I don't think you need a framework, but even the recommendation on a stabilization fund and how would that?
That's a simple conversation that we can have, because we've got money that's sitting in that revolver fund, so that's, that's totally fine.
Right. Right. Right, for this budget, at least start to, what is the low hanging fruit? Are the things that you know you want to do, that you, we should be doing, that we can do, and work it into this budget cycle, rather than, you know, taking the whole ball of wax and talking about it in April? Um, I would just challenge us to do that, 'cause I think that we've identified that clearly.
I think there's that, and then the user, the user fee itself, the fee structure, I think that can be looked at, and, but that may not be a budgetary thing so much as, like, a before September, so people understand things.
And that, that makes sense.
And then maybe a two-part type of thing, and then sort of break it apart and understand what the additional, um, buy-ins are for the families and stuff.
But I think to your point, Superintendent Clinch, you made it clear that we really do need to start making sure that we have something as a safety net for this field, right? We put a plow, a lot of money in it, we're still paying on the bond, uh, I mean, we're all kind of, still kinda surprised, but I think if, we've gotta, if there's any way for us to get that identified, so that we're taking care of our own and not waiting for something detrimental to happen and have to go back with our hands, you know, out. In this budget cycle, let's do that.
Well, we'd be fulfilling a promise that was made when everyone voted on the field to begin with.
Well, then let's, let's take care of it, so if you guys could all work together and make a recommendation for the next round, do you, are you good with that?
I think on the low, low hanging fruit, I think like everything else, and I wanna go back to the word thoughtful, everything else, I really, I don't wanna rush through, as you say, I don't wanna plow through any of this, but the low hanging fruit, I'm okay with, because we have had some of this discussion already.
Right.
At, at a preliminary level, so I'd be comfortable with the low hanging fruit.
I think on Friday, when Mark and I get together with Pat, maybe we can have a conversation on the, both the bond and like a stabilization.
And then do you think you might, I mean, you've talked about it a little bit anyway, would you be prepared to come forward with a recommendation on the twenty-seventh?
I think so, what do you think, Mark?
I think.
For, for just those, those couple of things.
I would say one or two recommendations.
Can you put that on the agenda for us?
Right. We're, we're talking about like, like, for like the, the bond and like a stabilization fund type of thing and how to.
Sure.
How to fund it.
Because I think that would be really.
Yeah.
Good faith effort on our part.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Tony, thank you, Dr. Graham, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Before I ask a slightly related question, student activity fees for clubs and such, are they a non-uniformed thing pending on the activity? How do they work?
That wouldn't be Tanya's question.
No.
Me question.
Got you on the hook.
That's why I wanted to catch you before you left.
I'm trying to think of a club or an activity that has a fee associated with it, and I'm not coming up with.
Is this a drama club?
So it could be, there's not much in the way.
I believe that there's a fee associated with it.
What about Decca?
I believe there's a fee associated with that.
Yes.
Can I, can I get back to you on that, 'cause I'm not?
So to piggyback off Mark's question, now, usually there's a sponsor that's involved with a particular club, right? Whether it's a, usually a teacher would be the mentor, something like that.
Yes, correct.
Is there a stipend that's paid to the teacher for being that mentor?
So the answer is generally yes, but not always, so, um, let's say that there are a group of kids who want to form a frisbee club, and they go, and they find a teacher who's willing to sponsor the frisbee club and be the faculty advisor, that person is not in a stipended position. Now, if the frisbee club gets lots of members, it's been there for a year or two, and it looks like it's got staying power, then that's typically when I would request in my budget to add a stipend for that. But, um, so, I would say the majority of existing clubs and activities have a stipended position associated with them, but something that just starts up, that's spontaneous, is not going to have a stipend associated with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll, um, let you, yeah.
So, Pat, I'll bring you back to the table here now, and, uh, we're gonna talk about a, a couple of different things before I do a budget overview. We had some discussion this morning that, that got very deep in the weeds, uh, with regards to pre-K, K, and extended day, and where we're sitting with all of these, uh, programs. So Pat is prepared to hand out for each, uh, each of these, based on the, some of the discussion that we have with the finance subcommittee. And I think, uh, the finance subcommittee will probably look to you to help some, uh, facilitate some of the discussions here. Uh, Pat, do you wanna hand out your, the, the different teams, please, and let, let's take a look at them? And Pat, I'm gonna have you walk through each, the, um, the easiest may be the extended day, so we may wanna start with extended, uh, extended day first. And, um, if you wanna start with it, then certainly, uh, Neil or Mark or I can kinda jump in, and, uh, let's talk about your thinking, our thinking with it, and, and let's see what it says.
Well, um, a couple of weeks ago, when Cindy Maxfield was here, she was talking about, um.
This is extended day?
Oh, extended day, I'm sorry.
Talking about extended day, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
We had a discussion, um, with Laura about the, um, the daily rate for the extended day as it exists today. And currently it's at thirteen dollars and eighty cents per day. And what we would like to do is, we would like to increase the, um, the daily rate to eighteen dollars. Now, I have, um, four proposals here, and we looked at the costs involved in the program, and we have determined that we, even at this eighteen dollar rate, we are not quite meeting the costs, but in fairness to, um, the parents, we may have kids involved in some of these other programs as well, we thought that eighteen dollars, uh, a day was a, a fair rate.
How long do they stay there? How many hours do we talk?
Three hours.
So it's. It's currently thirteen dollars and eighty cents per, for three hours per day.
So that's six dollars an hour that they pay.
Well, that's if they go to eighteen hours.
Not on, but we're using dollars.
No, 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 that, that's what we go to.
Yeah.
So.
Can you describe, um, the contents of the program costs? Can you just say the names of the kinds of expenses that are in them?
Well, the kinds of expenses that are there are the salaries for the, um, site coordinators and the people that work in the programs, because there's a ten to one ratio in each of the, um, sites. And there are the costs of the programs themselves, supplies, um, there's also, um, some facilities costs, um, because there's some cleanup involved when the kids are in the, in the schools that late at night, and electricity and, um, we're not too young in the building.
Custodial.
Custodial, yeah, custodial cost, so that's what this nine hundred and ten thousand represents.
And at this point, does that include benefits like health insurance or things like that?
Yes, it does. I've included, you know, the benefits in there as well.
So essentially, this is, the extended day is an outside the school program, right? That, so it's, it's, it, in theory should be a revenue neutral program.
Exactly.
And not cost the district, um, money.
Anything.
It has been costing the district, and the numbers are different, if you look at the budget last year, they're gonna be completely different, because it was, it was accounted differently. Um, and these costs, such as janitorial costs, um, heating it for the extra three hours, um, all of the other, the other, the, the benefits and so forth that are paid for these individuals that are brought in, weren't included. We took that money and we created an arbitrary offset, um, which was sort of a made up, made up number, kinda plugged it into where it worked, and we were listing it as a revenue paid to the, the general fund. So this is a true number, or, or a much more close, um, to a true number of what the, the program costs. Uh, and even bringing it from thirteen eighty to eighteen, um, where I think you guys are proposing, it's still running a shortfall, uh, that we would have to tap into. We have some reserves, uh, that have built up in there, and we'd be able to tap in and, and cover the costs from that.
So let me ask you a question, if the cost of the program is nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and the recommendation to raise the rate to, um, a total projected revenue of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, that's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we.
Hundred and eighty-one eight eighty.
Okay, a hundred and eighty-one eight eighty, so, so it, what's left in that account for this year, if you wanna do your sliding?
For the, the reserves, you mean?
Yeah.
The extended day revolving account, according to forensic auditor, had a balance at the end of the year, last year, three hundred and six thousand.
There was like four, it was almost four hundred.
Is that what's in there now, Pat? Are you, are you?
No, they, they wouldn't, that full amount wouldn't be in there now, because for this year's budget, we took some money out.
But this is not, but that, that actually also includes early morning vacation and stuff.
Yes.
Right.
You can't, you gotta pull those up, so that three hundred and six is, it's not gonna be a good number, if you're gonna go forward.
Right, right.
Because, because it sounds like the, uh, this is for three hours, so additionally, I mean, do they pay by the hour? Because what about the kids that go early, do they pay?
No. It's a flex fee.
Yes, they do, no.
It's a flex fee.
And, and actually, it's not included on here, but that we, we're proposing a, a one dollar increase in the morning program.
One dollar per day, it's five dollars, and it would go up to six dollars.
So part of this is the ends, the end game with, well.
Okay, so hold on a second.
So there is, there's an end game to, to this. I, I, I believe personally that, and it's, it's all up to everybody, obviously, but, um, I believe that this should be a revenue neutral program. That being said.
Well, that was the recommendation from the forensic auditor.
That's right, but that being said, um, when we're going through, if we're raising fees and we're doing things, and, and these things haven't been done for years and they should have. I think it was what, a dollar, it went up in what, in how many years? I mean, it's been since the inception or something like that? So that being said, while we wanna, while we wanna bring this to revenue neutral, there's also the reality of shock to the system, if you know what I'm saying? And we don't, my, my, I, when I say we, I'm sorry, I personally, and, and you guys may agree, but don't wanna see parents suddenly crazy burdened with.
Choking on double.
All these various fee increases and so forth that, that truly are, are choking. I, I think that they have to be gradual and over a personal.
So wait a minute, let's stop for a second, 'cause we got questions, I don't wanna go further with, uh, leaving people behind. Kathy, you have questions?
Well, I don't know if they're questions, they may be somewhere in there, so I, my understanding that we take in, or have taken in, uh, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars for extended day, this extended day program, but the actual costs were nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
Leaving us with close to a four hundred thousand dollar deficit.
This is.
No, no, I'm just venting, this has nothing to do with your booking or any of that, because this is news to me, and I must have been asleep the last two weeks.
You were away.
No, actually, it was, there's never made this call.
But, no, this. Okay, all right, all right, all right, so let me continue.
That's right. Mark.
So I agree, it should be cost recovery, there are two hundred and ninety kids involved, there are thirty-four hundred students in this di, this district. If we eat this amount, that comes out to six hundred and twenty-seven dollars, that we is subsidizing these students. And I'm sorry, I, I empathize, my kids have kids in daycare, it costs a lot of money, I get it, but I have a problem, especially where we are on the budget. I, I appreciate that we're gonna increase it, but I have a problem eating this as a, as a district, when it should be cost neutral, cost recovery. And that's, that's my issue.
That's good perspective, what, what I wanna hear from, go ahead, Susan.
I have, I have, I don't know that the concerns were, I don't know, that they're questions, I, I was wondering, is there an opportunity for, like, from what I understand, that three hours is like, it's a programmed, like, time, that, you know, so they, they're there and they're doing some kind of structured activity?
Yeah.
Have they ever had, just like, you know, parents who need just an hour tax return to the end of the day, where, you know, it's like a homework club kind of thing? Or instead of, instead of kids committing to those three hours, like, do they have to commit to the?
No.
To the eighteen? They can come for just one hour?
Well, wait, let, let, do you know, let's, let the administration answer that.
Oh, I don't know that I have, uh, a specific answer on that, actually.
I can, I can tell you that it's very difficult to manage at that point, if a kid only comes and says, you know, they're gonna stay for an hour.
Okay.
Well, it's.
I mean, it's not, not to be said that a parent couldn't come and pick their, their child up after.
But they'd still have to pay the eighteen.
It's the same, same fee.
Right.
Okay.
It's too difficult to manage it, there'd be kids coming and going, it just, it would be disruptive.
Okay, 'cause I know districts that do do that, they have like, you know, just.
We can get there, but not.
No, I just wondered if that was something that we did.
No, it's a fair question.
And then I also had a, a question about, um, so if we're going to, like Neil was saying, if we're gonna raise it as much as, um, I don't know, close to fifty percent? And I know that we, well, half, I mean, it's close, yeah. Is it, what kind of, I know you want it to be revenue neutral, but what, and, and then it's separate from the school, but if we're at, if we're the ones making the decision to raise the rate, should, like, what kind of accountability do they have over how they're spending the money? Over how it's going back into the programs?
Well, that's the administration, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where you're headed with that question, I mean, the bottom line is, it just goes right back to, to the program, to, to, to how much is the cost of the program.
No, I understand that, but like, what kind of decisions, like, you know?
It's separate accounting, if that, if that's what you mean, it's extended days.
No, I mean, like, what kind of program activities?
What are they doing, what's the richness of the program that they're buying, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. You know, like, are they, yeah, are some?
But, I mean, you have a coordinator that, that oversees, in Laura DeWier, she oversees all of that and makes those decisions.
Okay, sir. And, and, and we're going based on her recommendation that the eighteen is?
No, this is not her recommendation, she, she came forward and said, "I, I'd like to see the thirteen dollars raised, like, the thirteen eighty raised."
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back to, can I say my comment here?
Sure.
So my, my comment basically is gonna be, basically aligned with Mr. Darcy's earlier. My concern is that, you know, we're coming to you tonight with extended day, pre-K and K, and if you think about young families, they probably have kids at all three, and, you know, uh, I use the term this morning sticker shock, you know, we have to be, we have to be cautious with, with what we're doing. But then I also wonder, um, a couple of quick things, I know that, uh, Mr. Jones had spoken earlier about the whole notion of sometimes you might wanna transition some things, and this might be one of those things. One of the other things that Mr. Darcy brought this morning that we also talked about is, do we do this this year and take a look and monitor it really closely, so that we know exactly what's happening? And come back here again, next budget season, and say, "Okay, that worked," or, "Nope, we definitely need to raise it again," so that we don't do it all with one fell swoop. I, I worry about the young families with these three, these three tuitions.
All right, so, point well said, however, I wanna remind everybody that, didn't she say that the state average is fifteen to twenty dollars per student?
Fifteen.
And that, that's the state average, which is kind of almost, in a demographic such as ours, is a little bit of a misnomer, so it's not really apples to apples, and that local or, um, neighboring, um, communities were twenty-two, twenty-four. I'm not advocating for that, I'm just saying, we need to level set the perspective of these numbers, 'cause we're throwing numbers around, but people aren't gonna really understand the perspective. So if, if the state average for extended day, per day, is fifteen to twenty dollars state average, our neighboring towns are twenty-two, twenty-four dollars average per day, yet our rate is thirteen dollars and eighty cents per day, on the one hand, kudos to the district for such a rich, valuable program, because it's grown so much, there must be high value in it, and value is what, the quality of the program and the cost of the program. So I think that we, an increase is absolutely warranted, I'm worried about what would be the number in order, I'm just asking, I'm not promoting, what would be the number to, to, um, cover the cost, cost neutral, what would it be, the daily rate? I just wanna know what the numbers.
Looking at this, it looks roughly like.
Seventeen.
No, no, wouldn't be, seven, no.
If you.
Seventeen?
You have to get it up to, it's not under the ten thousand dollars.
Seventeen, it's, it's like twenty-one.
One thing.
So it would be twenty, what's, Pat, you tell, you, go ahead.
One of the things that you have to be aware of with, with this program is that there are some kids that go one day, some kids that go. One of the things that you have to be aware of with, with this program is that there are some kids that go one day, some kids that go two days, three days, four days.
Right, so we're talking an average.
So I used two hundred and twenty-five days to calculate the revenue. Because if you, if you look at it, that's, that's what it comes out to.
Okay, but, but that, that's, so I'm asking you, if you use, you applied that same theory to what is the, what is our current cost per student, per day, whatever, keep everything equal. What is our current cost to...
You need to divide that by two hundred and twenty-five, the nine hundred...
So...
Well, Kathy, can you do that?
I, I wanna understand it for perspective.
Why would the cost be the same for two hundred and ninety as it would for two twenty-five? Cause it says projected enrollment two ninety. Is that the ninety?
Because that, that could be a kid that goes one day.
She's, she's, she's normalizing the number.
I'm normalizing the number.
So this is, okay, so two hundred and ninety children, not two hundred and ninety kids?
Right, because if you look at the way that I, I calculated these rates, I have to normalize the students to account for the kids that go less day, less than five days.
Right.
So two twenty-five full-time equivalent children.
Exactly.
That's good. Mark, what's the number? Or Kath, do you have it?
Mine's all screwed up math. Mark's better at math than me.
So...
Coming.
Well, it looks like it'd be twenty...
So the annual rate would be four thousand forty-eight. And divide that by ten, ten months, is that correct, Pat? So it's four hundred odd, four hundred odd dollars a month. And there are what, eighteen days a month?
Yeah, it's about twenty, it's ten months, low twenties? If you have the age range, just by ten.
So it appears to be about twenty-two and a half dollars.
Okay, so it's twenty, so roughly, the cost for the district to offer the program is twenty-two fifty. We're charging thirteen eighty. So there's a big discrepancy. We need to be able to make up some of the shortfall because it has to be cost neutral. So the administration is coming forward with a recommendation to increase the extended, the FY eighteen extended day rate increase to eighteen dollars a day, even though we know that the cost to provide the program, which should be cost neutral, is twenty-two fifty. So by doing that, we're asking parents, we're gonna be asking for an additional four dollars and fifty cents a day to get us to the midpoint. And then, and then that leaves us four dollars and fifty cents in the shortfall. So given that, I would be comfortable going with eighteen dollars. And then with the understanding that we are going to increase it to recoup our costs in the next year.
To be, to be specific and clarify on that, I think, I believe we didn't take any official vote, but Mark and I did talk about this at FinCom. And I believe it's our perspective, correct me, Mark, if I'm wrong, that we should be voting on all fees on an annual basis. Right? So we should build this into policy, we should build this into policy so that we're, so we're doing, and we're doing an analysis every year. Because these fees could, maybe more kids sign up, maybe less kids are in there, the costs go up, down and so forth. So we have to be able to calculate that.
So that's good. And well, Susan, put that on your list. But I wanna go back to where we are with this number. So yeah, point taken. Kathy?
So I'm adverse to the district budget subsidizing this in any way, shape or form. I am wondering if the program costs, what it says it costs there, if there are any cost cutting measures that the program director would make.
That's what I was asking. I guess I didn't really...
Actually, what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because I, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm outraged about a lot of things these days, but this is really, I don't know. Because we were, we were sold a bill of goods about this. So has the director gone in and looked at cost cutting measures? How much could she cut back? That has not been something that we've had on the radar to, to go back after, but I'm not disagreeing. We can go back after and have that discussion.
Does the program warrant the richness of what we're offering?
This, well, well, does it warrant, if there, if this is what it costs and we're trying to, they, they have a deficit essentially, if we raise the fee of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, what cuts can they make?
Yeah, because I, I think you'll find, I mean, I don't know. I, I wonder if we should maybe survey parents who are paying the thirteen eighty now to see what their expectations are from the program and whether the increase to eventually to two, two twenty-two would make them arrange for after-school babysitters rather than an extended day program. And then we're kinda shooting ourselves in the foot.
But then, but then, but then you're reinforcing what you're both saying, which is, do we need the level of the program that we currently have?
Or can there be some sort of like, maybe not an hourly thing, but just sort of a, a more pared down version where they can opt into, you know, I don't, I don't expect science supplies and, you know, experiments or whatever programs they provide. I just want a safe place for my kids after school where they can have a snack and maybe play with their friends, you know, like, I don't, I don't know. I'm not saying disassemble. It's, I know a lot of work and effort has been put into the extended.
I think, I don't know that we would be, I wouldn't wanna pull it apart.
No, 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 I'm not, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that there may be a need. And, and I don't know that it's our responsibility to provide that need, but I wonder if people are taking advantage of the low cost now. And because that's all they need, they'll withdraw. And I mean, that's complete speculation, but you know, maybe there's some kind of...
No, but it's logical.
It's a business and it's market driven. So this is the best game in town, you know? This is, you know, I think you pay babysitter more than that now.
Okay, so even at eighteen dollars for three hours, it's still the best game in town, okay?
Right. Exactly, but they still come up a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars short.
This is a safety net for a lot of people who don't have options of where the children go after school. And, and the kids are in these three-hour programs. The program's been growing, which I think is empirical evidence that something is appealing to the parents.
The price.
The price or, or the program itself. There's been a lot of work that's going to the program and I don't wanna sell that short, you know?
And the program itself.
And I wish that...
And I don't mean to say that at all.
Wait, 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 wait. So finish your statement and then Susan.
So where I'm going with this is, it still is the, the best game in town. And perhaps, and quite frankly, yeah, great. Twenty-two fifty or whatever, we raise it to twenty-two fifty, make revenue neutral, it would still be probably the best game in town. You can't hire a babysitter for less than, I think going rates like ten or twelve dollars an hour right now.
Ten bucks, twelve, fifteen bucks an hour, depends, right.
So, so fantastic. I mean, you can move forward with that, but I, I'm, I personally am going with the perspective that I think we need to be cognizant of, there's more than one fee that we're gonna be talking about raising this evening.
But Neil, that's, that's, that's fine. I think that's, that's good. But I think what they're saying, and specifically Susan is saying is, do we need the richness of the program as it is now? How much value is, are, are, are people getting out of that program? Is it warranted? I think that's the, the point you're raising.
I mean, I don't, yeah. I, I mean, I, I don't want to suggest that there isn't value in the program. I, I worry that people...
No, I think it is valuable. People have, obviously people want it. But, but do you need the level? The level of the, of, that the program is at?
But it's not meaning it's mandate. Its mandate was to be cost neutral. And it, it falls short. And again, broken record here, I don't think we should be subsidizing it.
Okay. Lynn, you haven't said a word. Speak.
No, it's fine. They're doing, they're doing fine.
They're doing, well, there's two sides to it. So where do you fall? Don't say in the middle.
No, actually, no, not in the middle. It, to me, it's not, this isn't the whole story. This is only a small piece of it. There's the, there's the before-school program, there's the half-days, you know, when there's a half-day, do they pay more? You know, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to it and it's not representative. So it's really hard.
Yeah, they do pay extra on, on that one day.
Yeah, all the vacations?
They do pay extra.
They do.
On during vacations, yeah.
Yeah, full PD days. I mean, the, I don't know if this represents everything.
Is that, are those...
But this is the only piece that we're asking for the increase on.
I know.
As far as like, you, you talking about the school vacation programs?
Well, no, that's totally separate. But what about the PD days? What about the half-days? What about, you know, early morning?
Right.
I mean, this is only the three hours after school.
Right. And they're, and the participants in the morning program has been growing. That, that's, the enrollment has been growing. That was just piloted last year.
Yep.
So she did propose that we increase that from five dollars to six dollars for the morning.
What's the cost of that? Do we know what the cost of the morning program is?
Well, it, they're there for an hour, I believe. It's an hourly in the morning.
But they're still, they still have to maintain the same ratio, right?
Right. So...
It probably doesn't even cover the salary of the person that's covering that.
That's a problem. I mean, I'm not yelling at you. I'm just yelling. It's a problem that we're providing a service and not covering the cost. And it's...
I agree with you. It's, my, my, the, my difference is how we get there, whether we do it all in one fell swoop or whether we march up within a couple of years to get there.
So why don't we do this? I'm gonna take Mark's comment right after I say this. I think you folks, finance, need to come back to us on the twenty-seventh with a firm recommendation on early morning extended day, regular extended day, and a recommendation so that we can... Cause I think we can't keep digging down deep into this. You guys can do the work with the administration and let us know if, if this eighteen is where it needs to be, given some of the comments. And, and maybe, you know, one of the things we didn't look at, I mean, nobody wants to take, nobody wants to deflate a program and that's probably a very extreme word, but it, you know, without getting into all of the details, is the program meeting and far, and exceeding the needs? Or is it so far exceeding the needs that we kinda got to a point of, you know, there's no ROI, right?
Well, what do you mean by that part, though? I, 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 cost and fees aside, what do you mean by exceeding the needs?
Well, I don't even know what the expenses are that make up this, this daily rate. And I don't know if, to Susan's point, I think you said it really well. So correct me if I don't follow in your footsteps. Do we need all of the programs? Do we need all of the, the rich activities? Do we need, say there's twenty of them, do we need twenty? Or, or would the population and the, and the age group of those students do well with ten?
We could help employ a lot of the out of, uh, out of work high schoolers and hire them to babysit the kids in the program instead.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
No, that's not. Neil, that, that's not, that's not what we're saying.
I, I don't get the richness, though. There's gotta be some sort of expectation that needs to be...
Well, I mean, like, are they, it like, I mean, are, this is completely extreme and I am absolutely certain that this is not happening. But like, are they buying like super high-tech microscopes to do like some kind of a five-week program on, I don't know, cells?
We don't know the answers to that.
Yeah. Or are they looking at, are they just, you know, is it art supplies?
Right.
I mean, and I know that, I, I, to super, and I know you mentioned that it's not, you know, that that's an administrative position and that there's an administrator that we're trusting to do that. But I wonder if, if we're, for asking, part of justifying such a high rate increase is letting people know that we've looked into that. And that, I mean, if I'm the one asking them to pay more money, then, you know, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I feel uncomfortable asking where their money's going.
No, I, I know, I know this one. That sounds more like a Laura type of presentation as far as the program goes.
No, right, and I, the programs are running unchecked for years. Nobody's actually looked to see what she's doing and whether she's operating within a budget. She's just spending money.
Well, wait, let's go back to, let's finish up that part of it.
That's what we're doing now.
All right. So you guys need to take this and come up with your, I mean, this is the administration's recommendation. Are you sanctioning this recommendation or do you have a different recommendation?
I'm not sure if Neil and I are united on our recommendation.
Well, y'all need to go back with Jennifer and figure it out.
And our third person was not present this morning on our opportunities.
So it's perfect for you to come back on the twenty-seventh. Great, okay.
And I think too, actually, I, I do hear the discussion about the richness of the, of the program and is that too rich? And does there need to be some cost-saving measures put into place? And like I said, it, it hasn't been a program that we've gone after to look at for cost-saving measures. So I think it's a point well taken. I'm happy to go back and have that discussion. I think that that needs to happen. I also agree that it, it's a, it's a struggle with some of these programs, to your point, that it's, they're really not cost neutral. And where do you start? And, and in some ways, and I appreciate the discussion around the table tonight. In other ways, I just wanna point out, I think it's difficult to get discussion for us to have, you know, so...
Well, we don't have all the details, but we, this is the first time we've looked at this, so we really need to have this discussion. And I think people need to know we're having it.
And, and somebody made the point of, okay, so we have the, the bottom line here, but what does that represent? What's the breakdown in detail? So, you know, don't lump all the teacher salaries together or aides, break them out. How many have, you know? Because it just, it's, it's unbelievable.
The finance committee actually recommended just a single number for the simplicity of discussion.
Thank you, Mark. That sounds just like it.
It's one recommendation information this morning.
What's your recommendation?
I'm actually voting the recommendation.
What?
I think the next step, next round, we'll see all the detail that we had this initial discussion.
All right. So Lita, do you have that for the twenty-seventh?
Finance subcommittee recommendations?
Yes, for extended day rate increase. And then we're gonna close this down and move on because we got a couple more. But before we do that...
And if, if the two parents who are watching tonight wanna give some feedback and actually email Superintendent Clancy about that, then that would be great, too.
Um, so what, what, I'm sorry.
When's she gonna have the, um, the review of the enrichment program, of, of the extended day program? Are you gonna do that on the twenty-seventh also?
What do you mean, enrichment?
No, I don't think we're gonna do that. I think that's up to the finance subcommittee to...
Well, that's just numbers, but to actually take a look and see how they're operating?
Yeah, but I think in order to understand the numbers, you gotta understand what's in it. I'm sure, we're not gonna be able to go down to the basement on this. We need to understand what are the chunks of the programs? That's fair, fair point. It's just the depth of the information.
It could be that we establish a budget and we have a visit, a visit occur so that we can be informed on a programmatic basis sometime later.
Okay, so we're gonna move off of this. Before you go to the next one, you mentioned something in the athletic presentation that we actually didn't end up doing. I think you asked Tanya Rich to talk about the staff ad. So now we need to do that because there are questions about it. So you may be Tanya Rich.
Well, I don't think I can do nearly the job that she was doing. She, when, as I said, I was looking at that position more from the, the lens of the fiscal component. Getting back to exactly as Mr. Darcy had said earlier, putting something like, into place like Mosaic or something like that that's standardized across the district that we can pump out reports really quickly rather than the very kind of thing that was happening with food services last year where you, you're taking all the stuff by hand and putting, like, we've gotta get away from that. And so that's where my headspace is going, making sure that people are being billed in a timely fashion and, and that all the reports are going to the state in a timely fashion, all that kinda thing. But she had said to me, she said, you know, I, I'm also looking at, and she's saying, so many new rules and regulations have come down from the government that we need to stay on top of right now. And she was talking about, you know, the, the fact that it's just even hard for her to stay on top of all the physicals. And when the physicals run out in the mid, mid-year and stuff like that, the, the new concussion rules, all of these other things. It's, she said, it's just so much for one person anymore to just do. So she, she was really looking at the position from a much broader lens than I was looking at. And again, it's only a part-time position that she was looking at.
Well, it's, okay, so it's part-time, but we added mid-cycle six positions, six or seven positions, right? So it's not that we're looking at just adding another part-time. It's, it's part-time, a big chunk of that work is finance, which should be in Pat's area. And it sounds like there's a piece of that halftime person that she would like for administrative function. So what do you guys think about that?
Does Mosaic, cause Mosaic's now doing food service and, and are, is, can it possibly take on...
We don't know. I, I, we're not sure right now.
So on the table right now is Kathy, the part-time position for athletic director.
I can't make a decision about that. I need to see everything in context. And, you know, this is, what I have is the information from the twenty-eighth. I don't know if we're gonna get a revision of this with what the recommendations are. Because I remember last year that we went line by line and we really scrutinized things, especially with regard to personnel requests. And so I'm not gonna make a decision about that in isolation. So that's that. But then I'm wondering about the software that the nurses use at the schools that keep track of the students' medical information, like physicals, and the extent to which there's any coordination between what the high school nurse has and the middle school nurses have and this. So there may be ways to farm out some of those things. They should, certainly should not be done by hand and kept. There's software to deal with it. And so I would wanna know more about that. But I understand the need. It's been presented before, it was presented last year. But I wanna see everything that's under consideration and make a decision at that point. And that might not be helpful for us tonight, but I just need the big picture.
I would agree with Kathy, because she's, I, I don't know if software is even looked at, but Tanya's had not a lot of framework that she's been given to work with, not her fault. But there may be software out there that may be exclusive to what she's doing that would be a much more cost-effective alternative to, than bringing someone on, looking at benefits and.
But how much time do we have to actually do that? And is there a stopgap in order to help her if you decide you don't wanna add this position?
Well, I think we crossed that bridge and we come, I mean, if, if, if other people are ready to make a decision about that position tonight, so be it. I'm just telling you that I'm not, I wanna see if we, if, if we go with that, what might we not be getting? I just need to see what, what the context is.
Yeah.
Can you say a few more words? Is your conception partially will-keeping for, say, fee-tracking, partially administrative, save the physicals, or perhaps other things? Is it a combination of those two?
That's how I see it, yeah, and, and having to have the discussion with her. I feel badly that she's gone now, because I think that she would speak about much more quickly than I would.
Well, she's gonna get a chance to come back.
And that person will probably reside at the high school, not necessarily here.
No, I don't see the, yeah, the more that we've talked about it, I think Pat and I were saying, no, it should be, the position should be over there.
And best guess, fifteen to twenty hours a week is, is essentially like.
Right, part-time, yeah.
What's the, what's, what's in the, what's in the proposed budget for that?
Eighteen thousand dollars, I think, is what you're saying.
Why, how come we don't know what Mosaic can do? I mean.
There's modules.
Oh, there's different modules?
Oh, which, isn't that what Tom was saying? There's different modules that you purchase and so.
Yeah. And, and really, they, they've expanded. When, when they first came online, it really was just Nutrisystem for, or, no, Nutrisystem.
The food system?
NutriKid.
NutriKids, not Nutrisystem, NutriKids. And that's really where it started, right? And so I think that they've expanded the last several years, and I think that we're just looking at it and saying it makes sense. We're, we're trying so hard to find consistency across the district and everything. But one of the, one of the things that's concerned me, and, and you're gonna, and I'll speak to it a little bit later, but some of our infrastructures are weak, and that's where you start to have stuff fall through the holes. And this is an area, for athletics, is, you've got a fair amount of money running in and out of there. You've got somebody who's doing the booking of the buses and this and that, and, and I'm, I'm not worried, but I'm concerned that fiscal component needs to have fresh eyes and trained eyes that are used to working with accountability and accounting. Do you know what I mean? So, and it's nothing, it's not negative to Tony at all.
No, actually, I was more concerned about the program itself, because I know that earlier we said that we are not using all the capabilities of high school.
Right.
Some of the programs.
Right.
And so I don't wanna say, okay, we have Mosaic, but then we're gonna stop. I mean, if Mosaic can do it, I mean, let's use it.
Okay, so.
So we're gonna move on?
We're gonna move on, but we need to go back, that, that's, no, not now.
Oh.
The upcoming meeting, we need to go back to that athletic position.
Can we go back? Just one quick question on extended day.
On what, though?
Extended day.
What?
I just, I, and I don't know if Pat or Brooke can answer this, but if we bump this up, said we're gonna make this revenue-neutral period, and then we have a flight from the program, is the program scalable so that we can bring this down and not incur costs so that it in fact costs the district a ton of more money because we're obligated to, to certain expenses? Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, actually, the director last year said, she was actually complaining a little bit about the population being too high in Stowe, and that if it were lower, she could reduce her staff and, and one of supervisory staff, and that would be.
But I'm not sure where.
So in that sense, it's flexible.
I'm not sure where. Like, in September, if all of a sudden because of the price, we get the, the flight, if we have people run,
You guys need to have this conversation in FinCom and come to us, Neil.
But, I'm just throwing that out there, because I didn't know if you guys.
You guys have that conversation, get all of it together, and then drag it up to us, because we gotta move on.
Okay. Okay, let's go to the FY eighteen full-day kindergarten rate increase proposal. And we're gonna find ourselves basically in the same position, but again.
Try and streamline myself.
So, Pat, do you wanna just speak to, and again, I would say, we streamline the information that we're bringing to you tonight, because we felt that we maybe took too much of this from the FinCom. And so they, you know, I think we looked at it and said, how can we make it simpler? And so I, I think that if you wanna explain your blue section there, you know, that's really a, a really nice, simple way of looking at it. So just go through the sheet quickly, Pat.
Okay, so, um, the program costs for the, um, the half-day, the second half of the day of the kindergarten program are ninety-seven dollars. And if you buy that by the, um, registered full-day students, that's a cost of five thou, five thousand three hundred and fifty-nine.
For the school year?
No, just for, that's the cost of the additional half a day for a kid to go in full-day K.
No, no, I understand that.
Yes, for the, for the school year.
Right. Okay.
So, I, I'm recommending, uh, Brooke is, is, is recommending that we increase the rate to thirty-eight hundred dollars to recoup some of the costs there, because right now, um, at, even at that rate, we're not recouping all of it. Again, same situation as we've talked about with, um, extended day, and we'll see the same thing again in preschool.
So, that's for ten months?
Yes.
So, I mean, you know.
Do we know how it compares to other school systems that have kid-to-pay for, yeah?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Do we have that?
Yes, we do.
So, you know, FinCom, this is coming back at you, right?
What?
When you come back on the twenty-seventh, you need to have a recommendation. Let's just put that out there now, so we don't beat the horse. And, and while you're passing that out, this is not the same as a totally separate discussion, which is full-day, no-cost K.
That's not what this is.
And, and so I think we need to be really clear about that.
Pat, just go through the sheet quickly. I know that you've all seen the sheet before, but we're just redistributing it tonight, so you've got a fresh one in front of you.
So, um, this was put out by the state, and basically you can see what the rates are that different communities are charging. As you can see, um, some towns that we have looked at in comparison to ourselves, Acton, Botsboro, I mean, that's the same district. So it's forty-five hundred dollars for that. Um, you can see where we are, and Shrewsbury, four thousand, and Westford, forty-two hundred. So, um, as you can see there, uh, some of the, quite a few of the districts that are charging tuition, they're charging a significant amount. And, um, one of the things that is, as, as I mentioned in here, one of the things included is that we lost sixty thousand dollars in grant revenue that we directly applied to this full-day program, when the state cut that. So, I mean, this, I think this increase is warranted. Perhaps we should, we should go back and look at this again, like we had talked about earlier. I think that thirty-eight hundred from thirty-one hundred is probably, um, something that maybe, um, the average family could maybe cowl it.
So I don't know if FinCom wants to have any, any comments with regards to our discussion, follow up to our discussion this morning.
Again, we don't have a voted, um, number. We had talked about this. And, um, again, it's the same, it's sort of the same conversation we're having, is do, do we bring this much further up, much quicker, um, or do we do this in phases, um, bring this up, you know, several hundred dollars in the first year? This is going to have huge impact on families.
On young families, it's gonna hurt them.
On young families, through the thing, and I think, you know, full-day, we're not under that same mandate as extended day with revenue-neutral things and so forth with that. And so that's, that's really food for thought on, on that. I mean, I personally think taking it in a graded form, I think is, is much more humane.
Well, well, but the other thing to think about, too, is, and I'm not introducing the subject now, I promise.
I'm not.
But not for this budget cycle, but for next budget cycle, we, it is time for us to have the full-day K discussion. I know, I know. Lynn just, it's gonna get up and hit me. But we need to have that. Not now, but because we're so woefully over-funding this program.
We're already paying half of it. If, if the cost is a million, given, even going to the, to the next step, you still have four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in the hole. But we're halfway there paying for it. You can think of it that way.
Well, I would be careful with that message, but.
No, I'm just pointing that out. And you have, out of the two hundred and, and two kids, you have fourteen kids who don't go to full-day K. Most of the kids go to full-day K, and the parents, if I'm reading this correctly, no. So there are fourteen that don't go.
Well, actually, there are, to your point, because there was, um, some information that Cynthia gathered up, and I looked at it. And, um, oh, shoot, I wish I had written it down. I think it's in another notebook. But, but what was interesting is I think Bolden and Lancaster had more, you know, two-thirds of the kids that were in the kindergarten program were full-day, and one-third was half-day. But in Stowe, where the number of kids are greater, kindergarteners are greater, it's split right down the middle. And the Stowe folks felt really strongly about their half-day program. But again, we don't have to talk about full-day unpaid kindergarten. I think, Debbie, you guys from FinCom, did you talk about this recommendation?
So I am more aligned with Kathy's point in here, that I think we should, as long as it's a, attempting to be a collective enterprise program, we should be charging similar to the costs. And I'm inclined to have higher than the recommendation from Pat, say, four thousand dollars or, or so, or more. I think it's possible. I don't think that that revolving fund actually has much of a balance in it. So we can't really draw upon that to ease a transition. And then I, my view is, again, we would look at it next year as a second step and rate setting again.
It says it has nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in it, preschool and kindergarten revolving. This is from January twenty-eighth. Does it not have that money in it? This is the revolving grants fund from the budget workshop.
That's, that's been changed, I think.
Oh, all right. No, but it'd be, Mark, to Mark's point.
Right, so, so there may be some funds.
Is there any money in there that can help for this year? Or, or what?
So I think when it goes back to the FinCom, we would have a conversation with Pat on what exactly might be available at the end of the year for transitional funds.
And I think, I think the other thing is, to Chairman Ramos's point, I do think that we need to open the conversation with kindergarten, not now. I think once our budget s, a cycle is through, and, and, and I'm not even looking to next year, honestly, I'm looking to twenty. Not, you know, do we look at things differently, through a different lens completely with regards to kindergarten? Because I think that we do. We have started from preliminary, but it's just way too preliminary, and it's just too big to charge it here with right now.
So, Susan, how do you feel about this?
I think I'm more with Neil about more, a more of an incremental, but I didn't know, honestly, when the discussion was gonna open up about. So if the discussion's opening up about no cost.
That won't be for this budget cycle.
No, I know. No, 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 I know, yeah. Then, then, you know, maybe building towards, and then if there's, the decision is made to still charge, then we might be at the level of what that would need to be.
I, I missed, I, I didn't follow something.
Okay, so, so if, if the discussion opens up and then we decide in twenty-twenty that there'll still be a tuitioned kindergarten.
Yeah.
Working towards whatever it will cost in the meantime, I think is the best bet. Because if we decide to wipe it out, then it's like people are starting to pay more, and then all of a sudden, no one's paying anything, and
Right.
that doesn't seem, that doesn't, that's very.
Well, and there must be some, yeah, I, I agree with you, but I think that whole.
I know, I know, I, yeah, I think.
Um, but then, you know, I don't wanna mix things up too much here, but what about the parent, been there, who has their kid in full-day K and extended day?
Right, this, this is where we're going with this big picture.
So, we have to really look at that. Um, and I would just, for the record, say that, um, there is an option to full-day, and I know that for people who work, they really need that full-day. But the option is the half-day with, you know, another local program. I think that the, um, this one versus the other one, I, I'd feel more comfortable taking this slower.
Well, this is, this is related to our academic programming. This is a service that everyone has a special.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, and like I said.
Exactly.
If you look at where the deficit is, we're halfway to funding full-day K for everybody.
Right. So, but Kathy, and I think to piggyback off that, um, we have, we, we are mandated to have certain kids that have certain needs, that they have to be in there regardless of whether anyone else is in there at all.
That's the preschool, not the preschool.
No, isn't that for kindergarten with the, uh, for the, the second half of the day?
I, I think, I think, I think it's preschool.
Is it just the pre-k?
Yeah, no, that's a different.
Okay, I'll have that conversation on the next one.
I have a four.
They have an IP, and it warrants that they be in full-day kindergarten.
Okay, then they are. Okay, so.
But that's different, that's, that's, yeah.
But that wouldn't even, we wouldn't even consider that in the, in the revenue numbers.
No, I know, that's not considering revenue numbers, but it is if you still need a teacher and you lose a lot of students because you've overpriced yourself out of the market, people looking at half of the prices.
The support for that child.
So, okay, so I know where, we know where Susan is, we know where Kathy is, right?
I don't know that I know where I am. Do I need to know right now? I'm more in favor of an incremental increase than just going, boom, let's fund it.
Right, but you are in favor of an increase.
Um, more in favor than, of, I, I mean, uh, yes, I suppose.
No, 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 no.
I mean, I don't know. Do I need to decide, Tony?
No, we're not voting. I just want, we, I think, I think it's important just to get people's initial thoughts, because finance is gonna come back and make a recommendation. And I'm gonna jump to Lynn as soon as you say, this is kinda where I'm at. I'm not really sure.
Yes, very cautious of that. But I'm not unrealistically cautious.
So what do you mean?
I'm just looking. I'm just gonna withhold, because.
You're so good.
I don't know enough.
Um, so, Mark, I, I know where you are.
You're very neat, yes.
And Lynn, that's Lynn.
No, incremental is fine.
Incremental, and I'm, I'm at the incremental stage, too.
So, another thing we need to point out is, because we lost that sixty thousand dollars in revenue, I mean, that ninety-eight-seven that we look at at thirty-eight is really only a thirty-eight thousand dollar difference from last year. So, the thirty-eight, the highlighted line there, the thirty-eight hundred dollar tuition.
Yeah.
Ninety-eight-seven, see where it says?
Yeah.
So it's really only thirty-eight thousand dollar difference, because we've lost a sixty thousand dollar grant that we had last year.
Got it.
So the, you know, the net difference is, is thirty-eight on that, which is not really a big.
So was, was the grant, because the state took it away?
So then all those numbers should change straight up until the forty-one hundred, because it's in the threshold, the forty-one hundred.
All right. So you guys are gonna finance, you're gonna take this back and come back with a recommendation. Only thing I think everybody's sensitive to is for those families that have growing families, kids who are like, you know, five and two, or four and one, or whatever, whatever the ages are. Um, I just want us to be cognizant of, of that, because they're generally younger folks, they're not, not earning, their earning potential isn't where us old folk are.
And, and they have multiple kids.
That doesn't mean that we can't, that, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, and we should, you know, revisit these fees, but please come back and provide the recommendation on this, too.
So is this something that, um, in policy, they're gonna be putting that in, or is it just to one policy saving?
Well, right now, I wanna, I think we find out what they're recommending. I don't know that we're gonna need a policy on.
Would you move this to annually, that would, to.
Oh, yes, to Neil's point, yes, so we've got that.
I think policies should make this a annually.
Yeah, yeah, Neil's got that, I mean.
So, do you think they just want to do them all?
I think you just do, wanna do them all.
I think you just do one and do them all.
I would, I would have extended day pre-K.
Maybe even facility.
Yeah, I would give that. All right, and one more?
One more.
I know that this is, I know this is scary for you guys, but this is information we haven't had like this, so thank you.
So pre-K, so, um, at FinCom, just so that you know, we did, we did change the, the proposal one marginally from what you saw this morning. Because we went back and again, Pat and I had some further discussion. And you'll see that the increase there underneath is a thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-two. And that was just because we were talking about thirty percent today. And I just, we put it out there just for food for thought. So Pat, do you wanna just talk this through please for us?
All right, so for the costs for the preschool program, um, I, I took the total number of kids that are projected to be in the program next year and I divided the costs and it came out to, now these, this is not every cost in the district, like the number that the state would provide. This is, these are the, um, the staffing costs, the benefits and the, um, the facilities costs. So, um, I divided that and I came up with seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. But the regular ed kids only represent sixty-four point five percent of the students. So I thought that maybe we should look at that, only a, a certain percentage of that, that sixty-four point five percent. So that being said, um, we proposed these rate increases and the middle rate proposal, uh, actually, the, um, middle highlighted area is proposal one and we recommended a thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-three and thirty-two percent increase. Now, this program runs two days, three days, four days and five day full day. So, um, that's what these rates represent.
Why does the scale reduce?
Here?
Yep.
This is just because this, it was originally saying a nine hundred dollars and we just felt it was too high. And so we went back and we said, this is the smallest amount, so that's why we, we actually did it that way.
Okay.
Because of course thirty percent of like seven, eight hundred is that much more, so we, we, we back ended into it.
Okay.
So this is basically, um, what we recommend for an increase to try to recoup some of the costs in the preschool program. They haven't had an increase, I don't think, since, um, two thousand fourteen?
That's only, well, four years, yes, three years.
Pat, what's the, um, the, in that orange line, what are the last two numbers represented? The four eighty-seven and the one twenty?
Oh, the, um, four eighty-seven is, um, the revenue. Total revenue and the hundred and twenty thousand, four ninety-seven is the increase in revenue from the older rate, the, the rate that exists right now in that.
So, so that was gonna be my question is what's the differential?
Yeah, that's the difference.
Okay. So that's the additional revenue?
Additional revenue.
Okay.
What's a half day? Do we get the average?
I think they drop more for like nine, a bit more than one or something like that.
Okay, any questions?
So the, the difference is, comes part of our budget?
Yep. So.
It's an integrated program too, so.
Oh, yeah. So we have to cover the cost for the students who need the integrated preschool. And then because it has to be integrated, we accept, but that, that is not an open-ended, um, enrollment like kindergarten is.
Right.
You set the number of spaces and you fill them.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And how is this, how, how, how well, what's the word I'm looking for? How many kids come? How popular is the program?
I think it's pretty popular. I think, um, maybe this year we only had one open spot. I think that's what Linda told me, that there's only one open spot.
Okay. So FinCom? Another recommendation?
I, I don't know if it's pertinent or not, but it, how does the fee that the, um, non-IEP kids have to pay for this compare to the cost of other preschool in the area? So I want my kid to go here, but if they don't give in, what's, what, what other action do we have around here for kids to go to preschool?
Well, there is Perkins.
Okay. No, but do we know what they charge so we can see what they would pay if they didn't go there?
Right, we did look at Perkins.
We did look at Perkins, actually. We had a graph, a, a matrix of four in there that we were looking at.
And a full day for Perkins was like twelve hundred.
So this is a lot cheaper?
Right, but that, they also took them till six o'clock at night.
Oh, right, no.
Right, and we don't know, we don't know how robust our programs are compared to theirs. That, that wasn't looked at and so forth.
But when you shop for preschool, you know, there are different, you know, like depending on where you live. There are the, the, the five ones, if you will, the like, the better work.
Right.
And what do they charge? I don't know, compared to this.
Well, twelve hundred, like I said, was probably the most expensive one that we looked at.
Right.
But that's still.
There is one across, or I don't know if it's still across the street.
Oh, at the.
New Horizons or whatever, yeah.
I don't know if that's still there.
I'm not sure.
No, but you get, yeah, like that. There used to be one at the church, Serendipity, you know.
Okay, so can I ask you a quick question, guys? Are we ready to move? Because we still have a chunk. Are you good? So.
Yeah, so what, what do you?
So FinCom, thanks for locking yourselves in a hotel room and for about a week and a half to come up with recommendations on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so little clarification on this, so.
What are we looking for?
Yeah, I mean, really, because what it comes down to is, is more of a philosophical approach than, than anything. So are you looking for us to make the philosophical approach or are you looking for us to make the fiscal approach?
We're looking for you to make a fiscal, we're ma, looking for you to make a fiscal recommendation based on your philosophical approach. You've heard pretty much the opinions. I think that like Kathy and Susan, let me speak for you, if I could, you're, I'll, I'll speak for myself. My approach is a, um, a, a tiered system. And I don't know that I ever wanna get to the fully loaded cost, but I also don't think it's fair that people who aren't using those programs are paying for them.
So.
So.
I get that.
So you guys need to come back and say, for this program, we're recommending X.
Okay, so I can tell you that, and our third member wasn't here, but we probably won't have, you know, I love Mark, but we probably won't have consensus on, on everything just because of the philosophical differences. However, the end game, I think we will have consensus.
Right, get us the end game.
But there's a philosophical approach of how to get there, whether you do it immediately, whether you do graded. So my question to you is, do you want us to present the couple options? And then let the school committee decide which one of those approaches you wanna take?
Absolutely, that's great.
Or do you want just one?
We would love.
Because we can go with a majority and get one.
We would love your recommendation as to what you think this rate should be. If you're split and you can't get there, then let us know what the two opinions are and the backup behind it. And then we'll, someone will make a motion and vote, right?
Okay, fair enough, yep.
Does that work?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Lorraine, can I save one more?
Yes, you can.
You just said that your, your concern is that people who aren't benefiting from the program might be paying towards it, right?
Just in their taxes.
Yes, but then they're, they're, I mean, they're taxpayers who don't have any children and they're paying.
That's my point, exactly.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you meant like the, I thought, I thought you were talking about like the, the school like kids versus, okay.
No, 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 I'm just saying, you know, we have to take it all into consideration. I mean, we wanna help people, but we need to be responsible to all of the populations we impact, yeah. No, I think we're good. All right, thanks, guys. Oh, now what?
This is, this is somebody, Lynn, I think you just asked for the hours and Alina immediately went up on the hours, so.
Oh, wow, thanks, Alina. You rock. She's awesome anyway. She always like reads my mind and that's kind of scary.
Okay, so I know that we still have quite a bit to get through and I, I apologize because I didn't anticipate that the discussion would go quite as long as it did on these other items. However, you know, I just, I just said to Lorraine, I think it's a good discussion, I think it's rich discussion, it's a tough discussion to have. So I'm very respectful of what happened around the table tonight, so thank you, everyone. Um, I'm not gonna really raise, but I'm gonna talk quickly through this next section then. So because I know that we still got the, the reports to get through, including the superintendent report. So basically, um, we're gonna just do a, a bit of an update tonight and, um, let you know where we're sitting at tonight with budget. And, um, we've done a lot of work, we've done a lot of cost cutting and I'm gonna speak to some of the, some of the things that we've looked at. I believe you've got a new, do you have a new, actually, Pat may, may have that, that she's gonna shift around, yep, thank you. There's a new executive summary that we're gonna give you tonight to show you where we sit at tonight. Uh, I'm gonna talk about next steps, um, some of the driving efficiencies of how we got to where we are tonight. It's our hope, although this is kinda setting it off a little bit because I really was hoping we'd have something a little bit more finalized tonight for tuitions. Because this, we're hoping that that'll be the last piece that we need to plug in is these new tuitions, whatever they, they end up being. So, and then with the intent of, the intent would be to bring February twenty-seventh, our final draft and say, okay, this is it. This is where we stand. You've watched us go through the entire process, you've watched us talk through everything. We've talked through cuts, we've talked through different staffing, uh, components. Here's where we sit and it's our hope that from February twenty-seventh, that's what it is. I don't know that it will be a lot different, but I do think it will be some different than you've got tonight. Because you've got some things that are not in this document tonight, such as the new tuition rates. If you change, uh, the tuition rate for extended day, pre-K or K, none of that's reflected in here right now, okay? I'm gonna go right to the bottom line and then I'm gonna back in because I know that that's probably where you all have gone to. So I'm just gonna put it on the table right now. Tonight, it sits at a net total, uh, budget increase of four point two one percent as it sits tonight. So I'm gonna go through some of the driving efficiencies, I'm gonna speak to each of these and, um, then we'll, we'll come back and be open to some questions. And if we don't have answers, we'll go back and find them for you. Staffing is one of the things that we've been taking a look at. Um, I'm not gonna go into detail tonight because I'm not at the level that I can do that with. But I would tell you, I've been having discussion with principals, um, and some of our key cost-centered people in looking at, are there some staffing changes that we can make? Is there some anticipated natural attrition that we can anticipate? So for example, if somebody, um, if, if somebody resigns, is it possible that we might have somebody else, for example, that might have the right cert to get in there and then we won't replace that particular position? So we, we've taken a look at that on a couple of different levels from a couple of different lenses, not just one. So I'm not prepared to, to talk in detail on that tonight, uh, but I, I did have some discussion with the FinCom this morning about where we were heading on this and our thinking behind it. We're also taking a look at program efficiencies. Now, you've also heard Joan DeAngelis talk about the fact that we're taking a look instead at some potential program efficiencies. There are a couple of, a couple of other things we're looking at other than just what she presented with the, the other two programs. These are not new programs, but different ways to find efficiencies within special education. Um, we've got that, um, on top for our next principals meeting, uh, to have some discussion. But I would tell you, we're looking at a bit of a paradigm shift, so there'll be a little bit of a cultural shift there, there if we are able to go where we'd like to go. Staff salaries, one of the things that we took a look at was making sure, because it gets back to what's covered under, um, the general budget and what's covered under some of these programs. And one of the things that we did do is we said, well, wait a minute, if that salary belongs to this program, it shouldn't be in the general budget. We should be moving it over because this is where, if we want to be truly cost neutral, that's where it should be, not over here. And so we went through and we pulled that out and said, okay, not too many, but I think there's two or three there that we did that with, okay? So just putting that on, on, um, your radar as well. Can we go to the next page? Uh, Alina, thanks. The considerations that are not in here right now are these first three, the tuition costs, the pre-K, the full day K and the extended day. What we do have in here, and I said this last time, but I'm going to say this again, is we do have some, some numbers in here to help, uh, offset whatever happens with negotiations, uh, with our contract negotiations that are ongoing right now. So there is something in here and, um, we all, the other thing that we, um, put in here, I don't have it on there, but to kinda coincide with negotiations, is there is a, a bit of a bump up in terms of the transportation because that's going out as well, uh, for, um, a renewal this year. So that's also in here, there is something also in here with that. The athletics, I just put this down as a consideration, but you've already heard our conversation tonight, so you have, already have a flavor of what we're thinking right now. Can you go to the next slide? Um, our next steps will be whenever you decide upon those tuition changes, whatever that looks like. You saw the bottom dollars, uh, you know, for example, that, the, the one is nine, ninety-eight thousand, for example, with the, um, I think that was a full day K. So ninety-eight thousand basically would, basically go against this, right? And so whatever those magic numbers are, still have yet to go into here to offset that. So which would bring that four point two one down, okay, so the, where we're at. We, our next step is gonna be, we're going to, um, reach out to our three towns. We wanna make sure that the numbers that we're using for the valuations, assessments and such, are truly the numbers that they're using too. So that we're all on the same page. So we'll just do a level set with the three communities to make sure that our numbers are all in sync. Now, you don't have the valuation, the assessment page with you in, in this group each night. Um, and in part, that's because we wanna go back and make sure we've done a double check on that to make sure our numbers are spot on with that. And then when they are, you'll get that on the twenty-seventh as well, but you've already seen them in, uh, past iterations. And then the final two, the school committee on, uh, February twenty-seventh, that is what our, that's what our goal is. But it, we need these tuition, uh, numbers to be decided upon before we can wrap everything up. And I think, Alina, just refresh my memories, it's March first, is the hearing for?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's in a really quick nutshell. We've done a lot of paring down, as you can well imagine, to get from where we first were to where we are. My hope though is that you see the process as we've been working it through. You've asked the questions, you didn't get something at the very end and say, here's where it is. So I'm, I'm hoping that the process has been a good exercise along the way. I feel, I, I said this before and I'll say it again, I feel very comfortable, if you just looked at the budget and didn't worry about how you're gonna pay it, it's a good budget.
It's when you have to worry about the reality.
How, the reality with how it's going to be being from our communities, that you look and say, okay, we, we gotta go back after and take another look here. I feel very comfortable though. I, the four point two one is still a little higher than I'd like it to be. We still wanna bring that down a little bit because right now our, the, uh, numbers to the towns are still, with the exception of Bolden, are over five. So we really wanna go back and just do a final check on that before we bring a final number to you.
So, um, go ahead.
So is the process that, that the FinCom is gonna come back to us with recommendations?
No.
Are we going to go through? Because I appreciate everything that you mentioned. I don't know exactly where we'll go for some of the things that, that you mentioned. I mean, staffing is incomplete at this point, uh, program insuff, insufficiencies, I'm sorry, ends of the term, efficiencies. Um, we need more information on that, so that's coming back to us, correct?
Well, you know what, Kath, I think at this point, what I would feel comfortable with because I don't know if we can dig into this budget to find those things. I'd feel more comfortable saying, okay, thank you, because where we started was almost twice as much as where we're at. However, I know that two of the three towns are, that, we, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
So given that, I would like to see you come back with a, a point two five reduction. Point two five percent reduction in this, and what would that mean to the budget? And then a point five reduction. And then a 0.5 reduction, and what would that mean to the budget? Now, I'm not saying that that's what we want you to do.
Yeah.
But, and that's where we would go, but I think we have to look at, if there's gotta be some horse trading, then you tell us what those decisions need to be. But I, we, I think that we still have to do some work on them.
Yeah, I think we're not disagreeing.
And, and, you know what, and the other thing is, Brooke, Brooke admitted, we're in negotiations right now. We don't even know where that's gonna land, so.
Did you put, say you put a placeholder in there?
There's a placeholder in there.
With, is it got zero in it, or?
Okay, so keep moving on, moving on.
That's what we got, that's what we got, no.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, how do you guys feel about that, looking at a quarter percent?
Unlike that, so it's incremental, we see, and then look at what, but what's missing also?
What the implications are.
Even though we will have to pay for integrated preschool and full-day K, and as part of that, we would have to pay, you haven't yet put in the anticipated revenues, is that correct?
Not the, not the increase.
Okay, so that.
There's revenues in there, but it's the increase.
But what are you talking about? Like, if you took the recommendations that you made and you just normalized it, what are you, I mean, that can't be a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? That's not gonna.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Oh.
So far, and we may, if we explore what's, what the revolving funds have for balances and feel comfortable drawing down some, then it could be another hundred thousand or more. Five hundred thousand dollars is, kind of where we are right now is a possible change, likely, likely.
And actually, that's exactly the number that we still have. We knew we were, your number, actually, and we hadn't even talked about this, and that's exactly where we were at. We said, you know, we were looking at the basically 250 to 500,000 still is where we had landed.
So, what is a, what is a percent represent in this budget? What's a quarter of a percent from where we are? And I just need to understand, not just the percentage, but the dollar amount.
From the assessment?
If you're at 4.21%, and we want you to take it to 3.96?
Or is 1% of the total budget?
So, you wanna see?
What's the dollar representation from the percentage? Right hand?
Yeah.
Well, one, that's gonna be.
The 400, 500,000 dollars is, well, it's more than a percent assessment, or it's in the vicinity of a percent of our gross budget, which is a true 500,000 dollars, more or less.
Fifty-two, so that's what you're asking for, Brian, correct? To look at the bottom line and get what would represent a?
Quarter of a percent.
Quarter of that, and then a half percent, and then?
What would the haircut look like?
Yes.
So, if you add it in fees and so forth, like Mark was talking, you almost have 1% difference. But the, but the thing is, this is just my perspective, is I would rather see the budget brought further down and then have any fees brought into play, not try, not try to subsidize that differential with the fees.
Brooke and I talked about that today, like, let's not look, let's not use that as leverage, because that's not why we're making the recommendation, or the recommendation will be made to increase the fees, that's separate.
It's another game, it's really slippery slope, I just think that.
Absolutely, it doesn't get to the underlying cost, exactly, yeah.
So.
And I hear what you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing, but it's still something that we have to keep in mind, because we don't have cost-neutral programs, and so it's a problem, it's a problem for us.
Right.
So, I'm not really disagreeing, but it's a key piece for us.
And so, ultimately, that might be the argument that puts a lot more of those things to a cost-neutral approach as far as the fees go themselves. So, one of the things not visible today, since we're only talking about expenses, is the income side, and one aspect of the income is how much we're all from excess and efficiency, and that's another conversation to have.
Well, we don't, well, we need a perspective on that, but I.
I don't think it'll change a number, but we haven't had a policy.
I don't think, I think I found out today, Brian, is, does Bolton have, what does Bolton have for free cash right now, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't, sorry.
I, I think Bolton has.
I have a figure in my head and.
I do too, and I'm afraid to say it, but I think their free cash is about where our free cash is, and we have more than double the budget, so that scares me to.
Again, we haven't even had that conversation on the E and D, and I've been very happy not having that conversation, quite frankly.
But you got it.
Because, no, right, but in that brief meeting with Dr. Hemmend that we had in here, who was the founders of Mars, Mass Association Regional School Committee, uh, schools, yeah, thank you. But he's also written a lot of fiscal legislation that's been adopted by the state. And so, he has some very interesting perspectives as far as E and D, how to put together a comprehensive OEPED program that's sustainable, et cetera.
So, are you saying that after we get through the budget, you wanna have him come in so we can?
I would love to have him come in and then be able to work from there, then on a razor-thin shoes.
We can, we can do that, but I have to tell you that I, you know, we, we, we use, the district has used E and D in the past like a vacation fund, money in, money out, it's in and out, it's not, it's not a slam against any one of you or anyone who came before, but the bottom line is, we need to leave that money, decide what it is, and leave it alone, and don't touch it. And I'm worried that if we're at a million dollars or below, that's not.
Right, and so, that was also part of the forensic audit findings, was get off the hamster wheel.
Right.
Okay, and stop using this as, as a overdraft account or whatnot to budget. And I would, I personally would love to see that stopped.
So, I don't wanna take, so you started this.
This is a difficult year, it's hard to.
It's all, they're all difficult, every year.
This one's challenging, because we are changing how we think things, so it's hard to keep the understanding clear for everybody.
Oh, my gosh, and we've taken the easy road this whole two years, right? Oh, God, I don't know, my vote is don't touch the E and D, but, 'cause you gotta make it up in the backend, I, you.
We're, we're working so hard for this, and this fiscal, you know, quote responsibility thing, that I think that's a key component to really realizing that objective, that's my personal.
And we haven't talked about the school choice component, and we know, first, I had a question for you, and with Pat here maybe, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, so if you need to go back and research, just say, yeah, well, we'll check into that. But I know that the, the school choice, it was 600,000, refresh my memory.
Two years ago is 1.3.
So, two years ago was 1.3, and now it's 600,000?
I think we put 500 in, I think is the number that we put in the share.
Yeah, that's what we put in this.
My question for you is this, that is such a crazy number, is that because there was money sitting in the account, the account that we took out of there, or is that? So, I think that's really important for all of us to understand. There wasn't a 1.3 million dollars, and because we kept school choice, all of a sudden now, huh, we only have 500,000 dollars in that for revenue? That's not it, there was a, a big fat cushion in there.
There was a cushion.
So, because there was a cushion, don't, you know, if people ask about it, it's really important that we understand that perspective.
Right.
And I don't know the exact numbers, so I'm gonna, maybe you guys could send it to us later, but that's important to know. The school choice, and that's a whole nother discussion for another day, but I just think it's really important for us to understand that.
And I'll throw that out, that Dr. Hemmend had some really, in my, again, some really great insight on the whole school choice conversation.
Good, so bring him in after this, we'd love to see him, okay, Kath?
No, just to circle back, are we gonna get what, a 4% and a half percent of our?
Yes, yes, that's, yep, that's kind of where we landed in these documents, so, okay, I, yes, oh.
Bless you, Abby. Bless you, Abby.
Um, okay, I think this has been so valuable, are you guys good with the discussion we had?
Yeah, I guess I'm anxious to cut to the chase and see where we.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna get.
If the dust settles, I guess, and I can get this.
So, Brooke and Pat are gonna come back with a quarter percent and a half percent haircut. Show us what that looked like, what, where that may impact programs or not, and then.
For clarity, is that in addition to whatever income?
Nope.
That we recommend out of the?
That's the underlying budget.
From the current and stuff.
Yes, exactly.
Excluding, assuming that there are no change in income.
Exactly. Yes, because I think we need to challenge, we need to challenge some things. And you can, and you know what, I know this makes you nervous, I'm too quick to ask, but if, if maybe the answers become more clear to us that we, when we see what the impact is, I'm not saying we would do it, I'm saying we need to understand.
Your, my biggest concern right now is that without the additional revenues as such, you're gonna have to look at some natural cuts.
But, 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 that doesn't mean, yes, but that doesn't mean that we aren't gonna add that revenue in. I think we just need to get closer and closer and closer to what it is that we're paying for, what is it?
I think that this budget, and we don't have a 1.5 million dollar overage, if the budget, not now, but in previous years, if, if, I'll use the term, money hadn't been cushioned away in different pockets and whatnot. We need, to your point, we need to know what the actual cost is before we start backfilling with other money. And I absolutely agree, we need that reality check.
My understanding is that you're gonna reduce this 4.4% we're at, it's gonna get reduced based on the votes after 27 anyways. But then in addition to that, you're asking for, okay, if we have to cut it, 25, you know?
Because these towns are.
What would happen? So, this, this two, you're talking about two reductions, one you're doing anyways, and one, okay, let's, let's fur a little bit.
But we may not do, we, I mean, Brooke may come forward and say, okay, half percent means you're gonna lop off, you know, this is just not realistic. A quarter of a percent means, these are the things that we would recommend that we're not gonna have as a result of that, and then we're gonna decide, well, does this make sense or does it not? And it may make sense to leave alone, but I don't want to, I don't wanna look at an artificial number with that additional, because we don't know what the new fees would be, right?
Here's my fear, okay, 'cause I'm hearing two things, I'm hearing one, we're at 4.21 right now, but you think it's going to go lower based on what you showed us up on, okay, so that's one reduction. And then another one is you're saying, okay, what if we scoop it a little bit more?
No, well, she's, no, she's going, yeah, well, you mean with the half percent?
Yeah.
I think we, this year is, in the years that I've been here, this is the first year I feel like I could speak pretty confidently to a big chunk of this, but I need to understand the, the impact of the dollar to the budget so that we get in front of the towns, we can confidently say if, if we, we need the money that's in the budget. We can't say that, but we're getting there. I mean, the, the perspective this year has been, oh, now I understand where all this is coming from and where it's going. So, if you get to a point where it's a stress point, for me, budgeting, like in my professional life, when I get to a stress point in the budgeting, and I know, oh, my gosh, there's, okay, that would be disastrous. I need to know where, and I'm not saying we need to do that here, but I need to understand where the stress point is.
Yeah, but I just wanna, so this 4.21 potentially is gonna go down without what you're talking about, and then you're gonna hit a stress point, and you're gonna be with a stress.
I, I wanna know what a quarter, take a quarter of a point on, 'cause right now, these, these assessments aren't gonna work for the town.
And I understand what you're saying, but I just wanna make sure that there's two different things you're talking about, because when you start talking about taking away those percentages, I think that's when we start to get into trouble with the budget. Because what was happening was, yeah, he would come out with a budget and say, this is the number, and it wasn't budgeted. And they say, well, come back with a half, come back with a quarter, show us where it can come out. It always came out in a place that was gonna, we knew we weren't gonna.
But, but Lynn, I respect what you're saying, and I'm not gonna deny it, but we have a new superintendent here who's giving us, that's all I'm gonna say.
No, and I, and I get that, I just don't wanna go on super spoke, but we're, we're looking at two different reductions. We're looking at one you were gonna reduce anyways, and another one is the hurt point.
Well, I don't know if it is, but yeah, she's gonna, so whatever Brooke was gonna take will be part of that quarter point reduction, and then, yeah, all we're asking is, based on where we are right now, take it down a quarter of a point, then take it down a half a point, and see where, what this looks like.
Yeah, but I, again, I wanna go back to, I don't think it's just cuts, I'm gonna go back to Mark's point earlier, because I do think that there's some other revenue, like, we need to look, and I think Neil used at that last meeting too, and you know, at the very end of the meeting, we have to look at cuts and revenues.
We do, but I don't want, but you understand what I'm trying to say, is I don't want to use the crutch of increasing fees. I understand, but I wanna be able to see it without the fee piece in it, so I can be comfortable with what we're doing, rather than, what, I don't wanna come, I wanna see it, I just wanna see it. Are you, how do you feel about that?
I agree.
How about, how about we?
Well, I agree, but I have a question.
What?
Oh, okay, so on the 28th, the principals made presentations, and they were requests for new staffing and stipends and other things like that. Is that in here or not?
It's in the book.
Oh, you know what, 'cause you weren't here, that's why she's.
You can watch it online.
Yeah, I, I actually went through and, and said what, I, I, I think, updated.
Do you have recommendations for what, and some of it's in and some not?
That's exactly right, no, I actually walked the, the school meeting, last, last meeting through that.
And I can go watch it, that was the meeting on the 6th?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I definitely.
There was a lot more detail than that.
Does that answer your?
All right, thank you, I'll do that, I don't wanna take a turn.
You want, oh, okay, what, Neil?
So, we talked briefly about this in FINCOM. One of the perceptions I think that people have, if you go back historically and look at budgets and meetings, we, we've had a bunch of initiatives in the districts, and the initiatives have involved dollar costs. Those initiatives, as you hear, the teachers' initiative fatigue, et cetera, and so forth, but those initiatives and those dollar costs never dropped out of the budget, so you end up to do sedimentary layers or less than perception of these things.
Exactly, that's what I'm asking for.
I think that's sort of what people wanna understand, is that that's not there, and what does it mean, what does it truly mean to roll back that extra quarter point or whatever? Because if.
Why is, why is this, why is this a concern? I'm, I'm not getting it, why is it a concern?
Well, no, I guess I'm just looking at saying, you know, as soon as we start to go to the, the level of cutting that we're doing, the fastest way to get there is through bodies, right, through positions. And so, because you're, you know, you're looking at a teacher, and that's, that's a big cut, you know, that's, that's the fastest way, to be honest with you. If you had a quarter percent, the fastest way is to say, we'll cut three more positions, or two, like, whatever that is.
I hold, like a tenth of a cent is 50,000 dollars, basically, so.
Right, so I get that, but you know what, I don't wanna get into scare tactics, because, I, I don't wanna get into scare tactics, and so, frankly, I'm just looking at the budget. If you're looking, if you're looking at this document, if I'm looking at this document, I say, well, okay, so, this is where we're at, this isn't sustainable right now for the towns, we understand that, we know there's more work to be done, we know there's some potential revenue, because we haven't even voted on it, we don't have a recommendation to vote on. Are, are you comfortable that this is really where you need to be? And to Lynn's point, I know what she's saying is, we would get this crazy, like we're slashing and hacking, and, well, that's, that's the, that's the risk you take when you make a recommendation, that.
So, I'm, and it's not that I'm uncomfortable doing this, so be, to be really clear on that. And I also agree, you don't wanna be sending any shockwaves unnecessarily through here, because that's not where we're at. I think that we come back and say, yes, this is what a quarter percent would be, or this is what a half percent would be, then we can come back and make that suggestion. At the end of the day, though, we know that that 4.21 can't fly, we know that. And so, it's not like you're asking us to do something that.
But I don't understand why everybody's wigged out.
I don't know, we are.
Oh, not you.
I'm not.
I feel like there was something going on there, okay, well, good, then let's move on.
So, I'll have to say, labor increases are a major cost in all occasions.
Say it again?
Dear negotiating committee, labor costs are a major aspect of all increases every year.
Absolutely, okay, moving on. Okay, finance subcommittee, Neil's like, I'm not talking to you anymore.
Well, you actually got most of what happened today, except for we did have technology, the two teachers in technology and digital learning come in and talk to us, and I think we made some good headway.
I think so too.
One of the things we talked about was getting an understanding, not just of, if you look at the technology plan that's on there, there are certain needs for digital learning that need to be supported by literally physical infrastructure, computers, equipment, and so forth. And so, what we're looking for is for technology to put together a multi-year, basically like a capital plan, okay? And so what we're looking for is for technology to put together a multi-year, basically like a capital plan, okay? So that we have a very clear picture as to what the needs are. You've got a vision that this is where you need to be, you've got the C requirements and so forth. What is it going to take to get there? And so that we have this laid out, and we get this understanding. And Succi has some great information put together as far as the life cycle and the replacement, you know, schedule for the equipment that we have, which is great. But we, we figured out today what that additional component is the unknown, and we want that unknown to have some sort of coverage. So I think that's, that's one of the bigger.
So you guys are gonna be looking into?
We're gonna look into that, and then, I mean, we're still, you know, based on forensic auditing and so forth, I mean, we haven't talked about it, but I, I would, I would still, we've talked about this briefly, but would still like to see some sort of a accounting or audit or whatever of the equipment that we've had.
I thought we were getting.
Yeah, we've had that discussion, you know, we just, right, right now, we, we need to finish our, our efforts have to be to finish this budget.
Right.
Right.
So what is the intent? The intent is, you know, what's the intent?
The intent, I, I would agree with Neil's, I think that what we've talked about is the fact that what we'd like to do is bring in an independent, I don't know if auditor is a word that we're using, but somebody, we'd literally come in and do an independent look at all of it.
Yeah.
And we were looking to try to bring somebody in for the summers, that's where our headspace was at.
All right, so that's another one we're gonna add once the budget's over. Okay, thanks, Neil.
Is that in the budget? Or is that coming out of the, that's not a question?
We don't even know, they haven't even, they haven't even looked at, they haven't, that's the recommendation for, I mean, that's not even a recommendation, that's the intent, but they're gonna do the analysis on it, right? Okay, personnel, Kathy?
We haven't met, we have a meeting planned for the 27th, and it looks like we're gonna meet at 5:00 before school beginning, and we'll be requesting information about staffing.
Awesome.
Susan? We were supposed to meet Monday, but there's a conflict of door, he's sort of in town.
Oh, phew.
Yes.
Oh, good, that's awesome.
After all that, she felt really horrible.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And the superintendent's report, we made it.
So, yes, okay, so a couple of quick things for me, the corrective action plan, we're continuing to map that out. SPED is now finished, and so Joan De Angelis will be coming forward. Again, I think we'll wait till after our budget piece, and then she'll come in and do that, and I'll do the phase two. So, you know, we see that as early March, come forward to bring that. The FY '18 budget work, obviously ongoing, it consumes probably 80% of our day right now. If I seriously think that 80%, that would be almost an understatement. Annual town reports, we've done the annual town reports, they've been completed, and we'll be submitting them to our committees for publication within the next couple of days to a week. The SY '17, '18 calendar, we took a look at tonight, so we wanted to send our thanks to everyone who's sat on that committee, and they did great work this year. Principal resignation, you're well aware of that, so just to let you know that we're, we're putting things in the process now for the searches for both Yale and for the high school. And so we're taking a look at processes, and Maria's heading that up. And we've got a process that we've articulated for both positions, and we'll be able to start to do the advertising and see what starts to come in.
Is there a best time of year for that?
Yeah, we wanna do it right now, like we, yes. In fact, we're getting calls on it because there are other jobs already out there, being advertised right now, so we wanna get out there now.
So do you have posting? Because people ask me about the.
I think, I, actually, to be honest, I think it's being posted as we speak, I think it was posted today.
Oh, she said that to me?
Yeah, it's, I think it was, yeah, both positions, we're doing both at the same time.
Right.
Yeah. Ongoing meeting schedule, if you take a look at my calendar, you'll see that we continually, continue to meet with our admin teams. Right now, a lot of the discussion is around budget discussion, so we're not doing that in isolation. DPW district staff, I just wanna give a shout out, and, and I said this again last time, I wanna say again, with regards to especially the late starts or the school closure dates, we got a surprise, I think it was last week? I think it was Monday or Tuesday when we woke up, and it was like, oh my gosh, none of us saw that coming. Hats off to our, because we really didn't, like normally we see this stuff coming, and we're in consultation with our superintendent's group the night before, and then 4 o'clock in the morning, we all start up again, and we're all in consultation with all of our DPWs, and, and that's got a real, really nice rhythm going. This was the first time where the DPWs called us in the morning and said, we've got a problem. And so that was, it was really interesting, and it was one of those things that you're so glad that you've got these relationships that you're forming, that they're calling Jeff saying, you've gotta call the superintendent, you're gonna have to do a late start. It was, that unfortunately was truly later than we would have liked to, and I understand that, but I'm so grateful for our DPWs contacting us that morning and saying, we've got a problem. So hats off to everybody that, because it's working exactly as it's supposed to work, so, so that's it for my report.
That was a good report, thank you. Anything, correspondence, we can move unless you've got something. Consent agenda, consider the meeting minutes of February 6th, the warrants of February 17th approved. The next school committee meeting will be February 27th, I think I just went over the, the items, and Kathy?
Do you have the superintendent's media report, and it's just down for goals in 10 minutes?
So would we do that? I, I actually had thought we were gonna do that first of March, is, I think.
No, we, if you wanna do it first of March, I just wanna make sure that we do.
It's on there, yeah, I agree.
Okay, that's good.
That, that works. And then we had talked about an executive session.
And we will have an executive session on, on the 27th, okay, yeah.
Would I think Mark anymore?
The next meeting is the 9th, oh yeah, is it?
Is it March?
We, you know what I can tell you?
Oh, no, March 13.
It's March 13.
And then the 27th.
Yep. Yep. Wait, wanna come?
Sure, if you wanna invite me.
Don't think you can, but.
You can stand outside the window.
All right, so I think that was, thank you to you and to Pat and to the FinCom group for, this is, this feels like it's uncomfortable, there's so much, but there's so much good information. At least we, we know so much more about where we're at, so thank you. And I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
And so move that we adjourn at 9:19?
19:02, and I knew you would, thank you. All those in favor, it's unanimous, thank you very much.